Can I ask a question?
Yes, Pete.
Can we address some of the issues the public brought up this morning before we go to the Capitol projects?
Well, Anne and I spoke, I think, shortly after the answer, yes.
Is that all right, everybody?
Yeah, how do you want to do that, Anne, because we had talked about moving the order around a little bit anyway?
Well, I think some of it, and I agree with you, I agree totally, but I think some of the things aren't they in the CPO or can be part of it, yeah.
They may be, but...
No, I agree, I agree, I would like to discuss all of it.
Take a shot at a few, if you don't mind.
No, please, go ahead.
So where is, is Goodwheels in the budget?
No. We have not been granting, we've, our philosophy has been, since I've been here, is that we do not pay out taxpayers' dollars to other nonprofits. We just, we have not done that before. And we may have done it before that time, before times got bad economically, but we have not done it since I've been here. So it's not in the budget, there's nothing like it in the budget, no.
Do other towns do it? I'm talking about Goodwheels now, that's a generic point.
Well, he made, he indicated that Fort Myers and Cape Coral's doing it. But again, those are two different entities, much different than us in terms of how we operate and how we fund.
I think Fort Myers Beach, too. Alan used to be mayor there.
Go ahead.
We previously had, prior to the economic downfall, a partnering for results program.
Right.
And it was a competitive process where all nonprofits competed for one bank of money. And there was a volunteer committee that was appointed by council to review those applications. It was one hundred fifty thousand and things previously, I don't remember the exact dollar now, it fluctuated each year. And then all of them would basically do like a request for proposals or a letter of interest and they follow a process. The volunteer committee reviewed those, ranked them, and provided funding to each of those as they saw, funding recommendation to each of those as those, they saw fit, and that recommendation then came to council. And those groups could still lobby at the same time.
The only I would say is, I mean, we are a town with ten billion dollars of assessed value with basically no social service program in our budget. So, you know, we look to nonprofits to do things, and obviously Lee County has a program. I guess I don't know enough about this, but I'm wondering if we can understand it a little more and have you come back and see what other towns are doing, see what Estero's doing, see what, you know.
I think the program that Arlene just expressed is a lot more appealing to me because I know there are lots of needs that could be addressed by various entities. And unless we balance, you know, which one, we can't fund them all, that's clear.
Right.
And whether this is the most appropriate, if we wanted to fund a certain amount of money, it'll be amenable to putting into the budget some number that we pick up and say, do a competitive process of, but we'd have to explore all of them.
Right.
Because the first serve is not here.
Well, that and this one, I think, I would like to see when you say something that's federal or state matching grants, is it a fifty-fifty grant? Sixty-forty, eighty, twenty?
It's better, it's better than that.
If we give thirty, are they going to get thirty from the state or are they going to get ninety from the state?
It's better than that, it's ten percent matching, local.
On this Goodwheels thing?
But in order to get to the ten percent, that's why he's getting money from Cape Coral and the other places.
Let's find out a little bit more about it and then we can discuss it later.
Okay. On what Dallas came up and talked about and Charlie, I know, Carl, I think you sent an email around this, but it would be good to have a public conversation about it. They're talking about historic preservation grant program, is that what I understood?
Yes, that's correct.
Which is what? I mean, it's not in the budget, is it?
It is not in the budget, we took it out, I took it out. What happened was a couple of years ago, it hadn't been in the budget for a while, again, since the downturn. Couple of years ago, Councilmember Martin asked that eighty thousand be put in so that we could get to providing these grants. These are grants for people to fix up, renovate, and preserve their historic structure homes. And I think there's been a fair use of it over the last couple of years. But again, given not knowing exactly what the council wanted to do with priorities, we did take it out. Obviously, you could put it back in if you want, you don't even have to fund it at that amount, you can fund it at some different amount as well. But it, but that's what the grant is for, okay? And that's over and above a budget for historic preservation to do educational outreach, which is more Arlene's, yeah. That is not changed.
That's still left at ten thousand dollars, and that includes the marker program for that if a property is designated. It also includes the cost of the designation process, there's a recording fee for that. In the line, in the historic preservation grant line item, there's actually eight thousand, and that's perceived that we might, we have made an obligation to historic house in this fiscal year that the project may carry over in the next fiscal year, most likely will.
Right.
Because the carpenter had sent some issues, so that's what you see the eight thousand dollars for in this fiscal year in the grant program.
Well, I would suggest we consider putting it back in, I'm not sure of the amount. I think, to me, Dallas's words were well received, it's part of the character of our town. So I would suggest I go back in, at least my, it's one person's opinion.
And the test, have we done like eighty thousand in a year? I mean, what is the amount that we're putting in one budget here? What typically is the amount of room that's been used or desired to be used?
Anne, do you have the current, do you guys have the current amount of what we've spent this fiscal year so far?
Two hundred and fifty-three dollars this year so far, and my...
How much?
Two hundred and fifty-three dollars.
Okay. Yeah, but there's projects underway.
Usually a project takes, for example, it's very similar to the facade grants that we do with the down takes. It takes, first, they have a pre-application process where they come in, they are required to receive, give three quotes of a project. So that takes a couple meetings to get through, then they go through the grant process, and then they have to actually do the work and submit the receipts to be reimbursed. So typically, the projects are carrying over.
What is the average size of the project?
They've done matches, they've never done the full expenditure so far, and they've done matches. I think eight thousand was the last, the win property one, we've had a couple.
You spent forty thousand.
About forty thousand last fiscal year, correct? About forty thousand.
And that would be for like five projects?
Yeah.
On average?
That was more than, that was two projects, right?
I think it was two.
Yes, forty thousand on two projects. And so the monies can only be used on properties that are designated. So what Dallas was referring to is they, is looking at this as an incentive program, that they would like more properties to go through the process and become designated, and then they're eligible to apply for the funds. So one of the things, a few years ago, or more than a few years ago, the city had done what called the Janus Report, you might be familiar with that, where and by now, some of those properties are even further dated along, where anything that was fifty years or older could potentially be eligible for designation. Those, some of those properties that were of specific interest, letters were sent out to those proprietors to encourage them to go through the designation process with the hopes that, understanding that if they become designated, they may be eligible for these funds.
So I'd make two other points about it. One is actually what Dallas said, which is just the character of our town. Secondly, for better or worse, you know, part of the dynamic of this process, it is what it is, what we're doing here today is, you know, we've got a twenty million dollar budget or a forty-five million dollar budget, and no fault, I'm just saying the dynamic. What happens is, you know, one thing gets taken out and then there's a big spotlight put on that one thing. We've had, you know, scores of thirty dollars, thirty thousand dollar increase, forty thousand dollar increase, decreases, increases. I'd rather think of historic preservation as something endemic that goes forward, that's part of the character of our town.
Yep, no, I think so.
Fred?
What about the proposal that you put in forty with the understanding if they need a little more, they can come back? That's all they've been spending so far. Because they got to do the first thing, they have to get approved as a historical home or whatever building it is.
You could put in forty or fifty and take the rest, anything else above and beyond that, we could always take out of our contingent.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Right, and, yeah.
Yeah, I'll say that.
By the way, we kind of meet in the middle, at least the historic preservation board knows that we still want to push forward, we just may not want to do the full eighty thousand, if something comes up, we do have that avenue with the extra hundred fifty in the continues.
Well, this is only for designated properties, and if we, we considering having a different kind of designation, we may...
That's different.
City-initiated designations, I forgot there's another term for it.
The way the program is set up now, it's voluntary designation, so the proprietor has to come forward and they have to go to the historic preservation board and ask to become a designated property, with the understanding that that puts some additional restrictions on their property as well, that gets recorded with the primary appraiser's office. But the, but the carrot in that is, is the idea that they may be eligible for that funds. Whichever amount you decide to put in, just remember, there is eight thousand that's obligated currently that's in there. So if you're wishing to get to forty thousand, you may want to look at...
Forty-eight thousand total.
Forty-eight thousand total.
Okay.
I say forty or fifty either.
I'm with Greg, whatever.
Fifty, what's the number?
Fifty.
Fifty? Fifty thousand, everybody okay with that?
Yep.
Okay.
My third thing, and this is one that board is on to, you see, a little bit, but I think, you know, I visited direct center with community, our workout room, etc., it is small. We charge next to nothing, I would not suggest we charge more for that because we're never going to really totally recapture the cost. I mean, the cost on an annual basis is over a half a million dollars for running that, just that facility, meaning that building. And then out of a two million dollar budget, we have an unallocated overhead for administration for the parks department, six hundred thousand. So you would normally allocate down some of that from an analytical point of view. So the cost of that is somewhere between half a million and call it's eight hundred thousand a year to run it. We're never going to capture that back, it basically, so the fees we're getting are one forty going down to one twenty. What I'm hearing is that, so I was over there the other day, it's the middle of the summer, and like any gym in the middle of the summer, half the people are gone and it's half empty. Our issue is the peak, that's our issue, the peak. And I really liked, Carl had mentioned that to me yesterday, I wasn't aware of it, I really like the idea of shaving off that peak demand and dealing with others to deal with it. Frankly, the other facilities, a nicer facility, if it can be done in a way, it's got to be more cost efficient than billing the whole thing out, keeping the rates low, and inducing more demand to it. To me, the key is to absolutely provide a way for, and a lot of those people are seniors, for them in the peak months to be able to use a facility for a workout facility. And I think the constructive way forward is the way Carl was talking about before. I hope we agree on that, and if we do, I'd frankly get the word out on that because that the city is working toward assuring that we're not going to have people lining up who can't get in in the month of February to that room. And the other thing is, I would do something with that wall because, you know, when you go in and the glass was taken off and there's those black marks, it doesn't, it doesn't work.
The wall, the wall should be painted by the end of this week.
Okay, all right, wonderful.
Okay, all right.
So that's, that's an idea.
When you say Carl's idea, are you referring to the Y?
Why, and I mean, you know, we actually have, I think the Y is, I mean, I'll leave that to administration. But we've got four major fitness centers around town that, you know, one of the Y, we've got other commercial fitness centers.
I would tend to agree, I guess my thought is, is if our facility is busy, peak season, all the rest of them are, I know I belong to the Y, it's just as busy in the peak also.
Right.
So I think it's, I mean, it's just like the pool, the pool issue that we brought up on the last meeting was, we can't, they're not allowing us to go there during the week because they got too many other things going on.
Right.
And I think that's what's going to be seen when peak season hits at the Y also.
I'm assuming there's going to be free time, I'm assuming, this work has to be done.
All right.
I'm assuming that peak is in the morning and the afternoon.
All right.
And I'm assuming if we have seniors that we're talking about open time at almost any facility in the mid-afternoon. And if something can be done to shift that, I think that's just the savvy way of dealing with it. Because right now, we're just...
Could we have Nicole perhaps step up for a second, I'm sorry?
If we could do peak pricing, just charge them, surcharge for the price hours, is what they could do. But the second point I'd like to bring up is, even if you do an expansion there, isn't that coming out of special revenue? And it's not a revenue that we could use for things that we want to use it for?
Oh, it is, yeah, that's what Mike has talked about in terms of...
What would we, what would use the...
The multi-use paths, a lot of what we want to do, we can use that money for.
But we were talking about a pilot, if we were to do this.
It is a pilot program, I just wanted to talk about the peak times for us because we are eighty-five percent senior. It's from six o'clock in the morning until about noon. And we have had discussions with the Y for that. You come to the rec center in the afternoons, we're slow too, just like everyone else. And we can't, I mean, we even tell people, come later in the afternoon if you want it to be less busy, but they have all other activities that they're doing. So we've even tried to make that shift, so if we put it where, oh, you can go to the Y in the afternoon, they're still not going to go because they won't even come to our center then.
Yeah, we have a service that we're basically giving away, and I'm okay with that as it is now. But, you know, other people have said to me, well, we've got four other, forget about the wall, we've got four other major commercial workout facilities that are reasonably priced, all right? So somewhere we've got to get this balanced out. I mean, if we're competing for free for a service that's cheap elsewhere, we're going to be on an endless treadmill like that. So what I'm getting at is, let's find a way that works rather than we get on that treadmill.
And I agree, I think, but I think some of the people that come to our facility are people that are possibly on fixed incomes or maybe, and that can't make, because let's, let's be honest, probably in your neighborhood or in your, in your gay community, same as, as the mayor's and Mr. Forbes is, you've probably got a fitness center there, so you wouldn't look at that for...
Right.
With the other people, that's what they're looking at, the forty-five dollars a year is more doable than, I know we're right over here, right next to your place of business, it's ten dollars a month.
My son's place.
Oh, I'm sorry, your son.
How much is it?
Crunch is ten dollars a month.
So a lot of them are ten a month, right?
And could you do that for four months?
I don't think they do that, I think you've got to pay a ninety-nine dollar membership fee and you've got to commit to a year or two of that, that's how they make their...
Well, I'm with you, I don't want to disenfranchise the people who can afford it.
Right.
And one of the things that's gone through my mind, which I don't think makes any sense, and I don't think we can do, is, you know, other places, they would say, you have a means test, we don't want to get in that business.
Right.
We don't want, we don't want to say, we need to know your incomes.
No, no.
All right, but the result of that is, we do have, by definition then, a whole group of people and will, you know, who are outside of Bonita, who easily could afford to pay more, who are also in there, but we can't sort them out.
But I think with the pilot, let's assist the situation and let's go and see what you bring back to us. A lot of people don't want to go to the Y, because of their location, for whatever reason they want to go. Fred?
Well, I was gonna, kind of give an idea that's kind of piggybacking on what Councilman O'Flynn said. I think there's a lot of merit, what is it, there's three or four other commercial fitness centers. I think we should at least go to the four of them, and one of them will probably make the deal because they're running light on business. And that would get rid of the problem of the location of Y because they would probably be more in the same area as what the people that want to use the fitness center are. But I'd at least explore those other ones, and it's, they're there and I'm sure they're not all running at capacity.
No, I, I would agree with you a little bit, Councilmember, but I know we went as a fire department and said, hey, and this is back when there was only two or three gyms, and we didn't have gyms at our place. They don't usually do big deals with you, because you can't guarantee anything. I know like Blue Cross and Blue Shield of Florida has a thing where you can pay, I think, sixty-five dollars and twenty-five dollars, and you can go to Anytime Fitness, Crunch, all over the United States.
Right.
But you've got to be a member of that, and that's how they work those deals. It's not worth, I'm not couponed by any means, it's worth a try, but how are you going to guarantee them or how are they going to regulate that? All of us are going to go to it and...
Well, devil's in the details.
Yeah, exactly, and that's a call of strength. And if my last, I guess my last thing, if we're going to do those...
I get to deal with the devil.
Yes, yeah.
That's a Silver Sneakers program.
Yeah, Silver Sneakers or something like that.
The Y has the Silver Sneakers program as well as the gym here, I'm going to be sure, the city does not have the Silver Sneakers, where through your insurance, you get it for free, so you can go to either of those two places currently under your insurance for free and not pay to come to us at all.
Right.
What we're hearing from, from our clientele mainly is, we're basically the city of Bonita's senior center. So for them to go to other places that are not senior oriented, they're uncomfortable. I mean, because we have sort of pulled our members to find out why, and because they can go to the Y or across the street for free. And that is what they kept continually telling us was, you're a place where our clientele go.
They can go to the Y for free and they're coming to us and, and, so they can go to the Y for free, and we're going to expand the building because they, all right.
I mean, they're, they're looking for, up north, a lot of people, a lot of places have a senior center, I know the center I came from, we had a senior center. It's a place for them to all go, same age group, and socially be together. So I think that's really the draw to our facility, and in terms of them not going to other places.
Is that how it works at your gym, Fred?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think there are, I'm not sure, Nicole, I think there are between eight hundred and a thousand seniors at the Y, but I don't want to get into discussion.
Yeah, no, and I'm not, other places have seniors, absolutely, I'm just saying that's the feedback we've gotten from our clientele is they just, that's why they come, and that's why we are eighty-five percent of our membership is senior. That's just what they were, the feedback we're getting.
I agree with what Councilman Slackta said, and I think we should be assuring people that there will be a place for them to go.
And I think, I mean, I'll just throw a suggestion out and kind of piggyback some of what we do at my other place of business, is, I say we do the pilot program, but instead of having this peaks and valleys, if we could put a hundred, the renovation was going to be three forty, three fifty, something like that.
The bid we got was five fifty.
So put a hundred thousand or something like that aside, so if the pilot program goes bad, we at least got a starting block or jumping off block for next year if we need to come back to it. Instead of saying next year, we've got to fund this whole, this whole thing.
Yeah, I do too, I like that.
I mean, at least it shows a commitment from this council, that we are still considering it, but we want to try this first, we're going to solve the issue.
Exactly.
And I, and I know only for what my neighbors have told me that are at the crunch, and during the season, they're still looking at the members. And they, that might be a place that might work for us, who knows? I'm a member of Crunch, it's never crowded.
Oh, no.
No. I mean, there's people in there, but there's plenty of them.
I think it's really... Because they're big, they're big facilities. I think it's more of a social issue, I just know during the campaign, that was my polling place, and it was like a group of elderly women coming in to do yoga or stuff like that, because they have that facility room there also. It's not so much just the working out.
Okay. Yeah, thanks, guys.
No, I appreciate it.
Okay, Pete, do you have something else?
I don't know if we covered, let's see, things that were raised by some...
We're not looking at expanding the gym.
Not the pool.
I'm doing the two-step, with Greg's, having the pilot program in this way, and then putting something in so we have a marker in there if it doesn't work out.
And I think the same thing, I mean, since someone did bring it up at the last city council, we do the same thing with the pool.
Yeah.
The pool.
Yeah.
I mean, continue with the pilot program, see how it works, but I think we should commit, not the whole funds, but some funds towards that, towards that program, because we can always, either A, put it somewhere next year if the pilot program works out, we can do it somewhere.
Saying, put the money in for a year.
Fred? I don't want to throw water on the ideas because I like them, but if you build stuff and give it away, guess what? In a few years, you're going to be back here because it's going to be blowing out the suggestions.
Greg's not saying that, Greg's saying, try the pilots, if the pilots work, he's okay, that's what I'm saying. But if they're not, let's not start from scratch.
Right.
I agree with that, but it's got to be a lot more money to get in, so you don't blow the walls out.
Fair, Carl, do you have it?
Yes, sir, we understand. Pete, do you have other, because as you say...
I don't, go ahead.
No, I'm just going to say, do we want to go down this list, we've covered a couple of them.
But one of the other thing, we, the Little League, about the...
Oh, yes, yes, thank you, right, so the Little League, but is that...
That's in, that's in.
And laser grading is in, huh?
That's the laser thing.
It's in one of this.
Thirty-five thousand.
I guess we're taking over, maybe.
Well, no, it's not, no, I'm just saying, yeah, it's in there.
It is in your CIP.
Yeah, it's in, CIP is like thirty thousand for laser grading.
It's thirty-five thousand, it is to regrade the entire baseball facility.
All four fields or just...
All four fields. It was proposed last year, but it was pushed off to this year, so that is why the Little League president wanted to be here because they do want us to not push it again.
Will that be, will we be ready for the next season and the grass will be all back and all that, or will we just...
Well, we won't be ready for fall ball because Little League actually plays almost year round now, they have two seasons. So for fall ball, it will be at current, unless, when we'll give them the option, we'll talk to the Little League board. Some years, they've not played fall ball here because they didn't get enough participation, so they moved it to San Carlos. Our Little League does work very closely with the San Carlos Little League, so they did it there because they had more participation there that we could close our fields for fall ball and redo the hideaway so that we could have it ready for January's winter season.
Would if you started right now on it, when would it be ready?
If I started right now, then I could have it ready by fall ball, well, I have to go out to bid.
Well, I, I think for thirty-five grand, let her be able to figure out a way to drag thirty-five out of this year's money and do it now.
I got two questions.
All right.
Go ahead, go ahead.
All right.
Yeah. I'll follow what Fred said.
Well, we'd like council direction on that, do you want us to go ahead and go for the thirty-five thousand now?
Yeah, well, yeah, my two, I think it's a great thing to do, I just, I was going to ask the question, two things. A, who owns the fields?
The city.
And B, how does the laser grading compare to the re-sodding of the two or three soccer field, the two soccer fields we have off Y?
In terms of cost, overall, it would be about the same.
I think, I mean, I think we take care of that soccer field, we do that very often.
Yeah, we just broke the soccer out into three years and did one field a year, but this, we can't do that.
Yeah, no, I think...
But yes, it would be about the same.
And Nicole, has that addressed a gentleman's concern? I know there's, I just want to be clear, laser grading is talking about the basis being lower than the grass and all that, that would address more.
It would address all of that.
Okay.
All four fields.
On all four fields, yep.
And we're going to start as soon as possible, not next fiscal year, or what?
Well, it is, I mean, we aren't prepared currently to go out to bid, so that does take a little bit of time. So we still would be going into fall, most likely throughout the bid process. But, so we would have to talk to Little League if they're okay with us not having fall ball this year.
But if we do it right now, like Councilman said, we could, you don't think we could squeeze it in?
Not by the time you go out for the bid, I mean, that process does take time to put the documents together, then they do legal review, and then we advertise for bidding for a certain amount of time.
I should, I should probably notice, but I don't, I apologize. What is the policy of the city on going out the bid?
If it's over twenty-five thousand, we go out to bid.
You have the ability, if there's extenuating emergency circumstances, to waive bid requirements and just go ahead if you have a good price?
We do have a price for the thirty-five, so, but we only have one.
I mean, I, my suggestion is to give one more price, then, if it's in the ballpark, just do it, waive that.
Right.
And then we come back to city, actually, it'd be city manager's level of authority because it's under fifty.
Is that fine, that's fine, by me, I don't know if...
Everybody okay?
It does expedite the process.
Let's do it, yeah, because I don't like them practicing in someone else's field, especially when they're turning out the results that they're turning out.
And where are we on the batting cages?
The batting cage is there, we were waiting, yeah, we were waiting on Little League for, because they did request us to put that project on hold because they were reviewing their own budget at the time because they wanted to make other improvements in terms of being able to lock it up and not have it for public use and things like that. They have decided that they don't have the funding currently, and they just let me know that yesterday around three-thirty. So we have already ordered the netting this morning.
Oh, wonderful.
So what we're going to do is, if they are still in the running towards the championships, then we will install them as soon as we get them, that process does take about ten days. That process does take about ten days from, cause they manufacture based on specifications of our cage.
Okay.
Um, if they're not, then we'll wait till fall ball starts.
Thank you. Steve, maybe, one of the other things that was mentioned along with all this was the millage rate. Do we want to do that now or?
Bob, you know, we're getting into these projects, why don't we rattle through these projects? Then we'll get into the mill rate, then we'll get into the CIP, does that sound good?
Yeah.
Fred, do you have something to add right now or?
Well, yeah, I, what about East Terry Street? Because to me, doing East Terry Street compared to everybody else.
Alright, does everybody have this handout?
Yeah, what page is that on?
Let's, um.
Well, she gave it a review.
Yeah, one thirty-nine and one forty. So let's go through that systematically, um. The first thing on there, and you know, a lot of these came to me, um, and I'll just say upfront, I'm not advocating for or against them. Just as a blanket statement, but a lot of them came through me. So having said that, um, number one is a request for the city to purchase Cullen Hasty's property uh, at two hundred thousand dollars. And Carl, can you explain where that, where we got that number or where that came from or somebody?
Well, um, we have been approached by, uh, Cullen more than once, uh, to purchase the property. Uh, the number originally was two hundred thousand dollars. Um, we were frankly resistant to that, um, only because they're really, in fact, this is actually coming back at the next council meeting. Um, it's because we really didn't have a criteria as to how you choose.
Right.
What properties you're going to buy or not, what's the benefit to the city. Um, the number now, uh, apparently has dropped to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, um, we, and we don't have this budgeted. This is going to have to be something that you, you'd budget if you wanted to do that, that piece of property. The criteria proposal is coming back on July twentieth for your consideration.
Okay. So, well, can I make, hold off and address it then, Fred?
Well, I think, I would support it as long as it's the user or the owner is going to finance it for at least five years or more at no interest. So if it was a hundred and fifty, it'd be five payments of thirty grand. And also I think we have to be fair and allow for closing costs and other things. So, and that's going to eat up, that's going to make it more than a hundred and fifty.
Sure. Audrey?
And we can have it where we remit payments over time if that's, you know, if the purchaser is, if that's acceptable to them. But also recognize that Florida constitution prohibits, uh, somebody completing a mortgage on city property. So for us to take title to property, uh, nobody can have any, uh, way of ever acquiring that property out of, you know, back from us because of that restriction, okay, right? And then just as you mentioned, the hard, there are hard costs.
Yeah, and then, and then the other thing that I do know he's more than willing to do, because I think there's at least a water project that's hopefully planned to go in on part of it. There's one point one acres and that would be, he's willing to sign when, when we sign, that we would have the right to go in and do that project even before we own the property outright. In other words, once we sign a deal.
Okay, Audrey?
And I, I can see what the city manager is mouthing to me, but, uh.
It was nice, really, it was very nice.
Mr. Hasty does not own the property, he has a life estate.
Right.
So the city would need to purchase two things. Uh, they would need to purchase the property and then if there was a situation where the, uh, we wanted advanced use of the property and the fire department or fire district has had experience with this, uh, there's actuarial tables where you can purchase that life estate. Uh, so if Mr. Hasty is in rather good health, I don't know how old he is, but you know, that could be twenty years if the property's uncovered if you do not purchase the life estate. My understanding, his intent is to stay there. And so as far as projects, that might run into some difficulty also.
No, he, well, he understands that. I think, I don't think he owns it anymore.
Right, I'm saying that.
Yeah, he doesn't, yeah.
Right, okay.
Carl, yeah, I just, I would recommend to council that you take a look at the criteria.
Right, yes.
Decide what you want to do on the criteria, uh, before you make this decision. We don't want you making a decision absent criteria.
Right.
And then have to face somebody else who wants you to buy their property.
Right.
And for some reason you need to say no. You have to have that justification behind you.
Sure, that sounds good.
That's absolutely essential. I think, I think the average person.
We're just going to reverse mortgage.
Yeah, I think the average person, not, not knowing the background to this, could listen to this conversation and think, oh, we just find somebody's house. No, there's a, there's a whole history and ecological history to the area. I know Matt can recite on it. I don't propose we do that today. So Carl, I totally agree, we need criteria and make sure it makes sense.
Okay. Okay, good, so let's move on to number two.
Yeah, I, I don't know where, uh, I'm happy to put it in, I mean, I have other bigger things, so to speak, to talk about. Uh, I guess this just got picked up from the strategic workshops, things that were mentioned, yeah, so. And repairs and maintenance reserve, I'm not even sure what that is, other than maybe a little bit of what we were talking about before.
Well, I think that's what it is and I, and I, and I'll piggyback on top of that.
Oh, good, cause you can explain what I meant.
Well, and what I think it is, is that, you know, these buildings, they've got to be maintained.
Right.
Instead of heat, instead of continually to pull it out of reserves or when it breaks, I think that we should have, I know, again, at my other place of business, we have a depreciation fund that, okay, the building's worth, and we bought it a million dollars. We take twenty-five, twenty-seven percent of that as part of.
Interesting.
Of, of the, uh, CAFR's report, it says, here's, here's how much assets you have, here's how much in reserves you should have. Cause if this building blows down tomorrow, yeah, we're going to get insurance money, but is that going to be enough? Or if this, someone runs through it, we're going to get damage or if the AC goes out or some, we want to change all the lighting to LED. We have that reserve fund in there, we do it with vehicles and with buildings. So we have a reserve fund built into it based on, I think it's twenty-seven, twenty-seven percent of the depreciation of assets of the building. And it's just a reserve, just in case something happened, we want to make a change. We don't have to raise the millage.
Right.
And then incur these funds or rob a CP, a CIP to do this because it's something important. I think that's what you were referring to.
Well, thank you.
That's how I intended, that's how I interpreted it.
Alright, so that's, uh, something to think about. I mean, we do have a tight budget this year, so.
I think it's something for the future.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so not any immediate action.
Yeah, maybe do some preliminary work on it.
Got you, no.
Does that make sense?
Could be something that these, if these two projects work out, there's a, there's a kickoff.
Okay. So, uh, number three, stormwater utility fee, um, is, I'm just looking, and this is a subset of a larger list, of, of ways to take pressure off the budget. And, you know, for those who weren't here last time, we had hours on hole forty-one. We know what the financial, we know it's a good project, but we know it's got a massive financial strain on our budget. And this is, stormwater utilities can place all over the country. You know, this is not some radical idea. So it's something to think about, but I think it's fair to put it in the same category as two, Carl, number two, because it's going to take work, it means at a minimum capturing what the value is. And, uh, Audrey's recited that there are all kinds of, you know, appropriate technical requirements as to that. It's not something we're going to be able to, like a switching. So those are my two, at least on this page.
But that would be a fee that would be paid by the downtown.
Yeah, yeah. And you know, by the way, I mean, you go to places like south of us in Naples and there's a stormwater utility for like massive parts of town. And that takes a lot of pressure off the city budget. Yeah, here.
Pressure on the downtown merchants.
Well, but there, but there's. Well, the question is, what's appropriate?
Well, right, and I think in looking at it, I mean, I'm familiar with a citywide stormwater fee.
Right.
So you spread the burden across, but you've got people who are not used to paying it now, who would then be, so I mean, and I've seen things like that, but we can look, and Audrey wants to say something bad.
I'm just, if I, before you do, my understanding, I think, one time from talking to Ben Abad, I think it was Ben, was this was something that was considered years ago, but we have an interesting situation in Bonita Springs, which we have all these gated communities that pay for their own stormwater systems. So, um, if, if we were to put a citywide in, we couldn't apply it to those communities. Or if we did, we'd ask them to pay for somebody else's stormwater system.
Mm-hmm.
So you'd end up with a number that puts a lot of pressure on the houses in the non-gated communities. And that was deemed to be, you know, maybe too much to, so to speak, to ask. So, and, you know, it's a fair point.
Audrey, did you want to say?
That's actually the point I was going to raise, because, uh, state statute, it's not Audrey, but state statute has three different types of fees and you could set it up as an assessment. I think I did a memo, uh, to Carl, I think in May, and I can resurrect that and get it to Carl. Uh, as to, uh, you can also build in your legal costs, your accounting costs. You know, because there are consultants you would have to hire to set up this type of special assessment. Uh, it'd be a mandatory special assessment, not like a voluntary special assessment. If council's inclined to go forward, there are consultants that you can hire to do the whole thing and make it as one package.
Could it be a one-time special assessment?
No.
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 Annual.
I, I think enough said for today. I think it's, I'm not asking for this to be done this year as much as to begin an investigation this year.
Okay.
So I'm not asking for this now.
Okay.
Councilman Flynn, would, would that fit in with a, the workshop on pollution, the real story on pollution?
No, it's different, I think.
Would that stormwater contributes to pollution?
Well, yeah, but, okay, it can be in the same workshop, yeah.
Alright, and number four, we have add shade in the dog park and that was from some public input from Donna Stone.
That one, just so everyone is aware, um, that's going to be taken care of now in this budget year. We do have, um, the tree advisory board is purchasing large, very large shade trees, so it's shaded now. Um, cause that's the issue, we do have trees in the medium dog section, but they're still young and small. So, um, we, staff was at their last meeting on Monday. Um, everyone's agreeable to that and they are going to provide their funding also. Um, we do have a donate a tree program, um, and our former mayor is donating funds to add large shade trees to that section as well.
That's for the medium dogs?
For the medium dog section, which is the one that is lacking the shade. So we do have two different groups that are going to add that now.
Nice.
So I think that one's taken care of.
Okay, great. Um, number five, request to subscribe to the Florida PACE Funding Agency, that, that came in. And Carl, this falls under our general for nonprofit, right?
Yes, um, I am probably not as familiar with PACE as I should be. Um, looking for anybody on staff who'd like to weigh in on PACE? Hans?
I, once this information came in, I did go online and just did a little research. It's a program of where property owners can, uh, make improvements to their property and have a deep finance through this organization or basically use that organization, uh, to provide the vendors to do, to do the improvements. And then it is a special assessment or assessment on the tax bill. So, um, to, for, for the, that company to be repaid or, or PACE to be repaid, um, for, for that improvement. So we would need to find out from the tax appraiser, you know, what would be involved there. Lee County does not currently offer it to my knowledge, they're not listed on the site as being a participating, um, jurisdiction.
They, they are actually not a participating agency. They were all hot under this, on this, under a previous administration, not so much under the new administration.
Okay.
So really the issue is the city's involvement would really be to place the assessment, the special assessment against the property. And then of course, the persons would, first off, it's a voluntary program, they don't have to do anything. But they understand that if they participate in this program, there will be a special assessment against their property and they'll, they'll pay it on their tax bill.
Individuals opt in?
Yes, it's not, yes, participation's not required by anybody.
Is it close to city anything? I don't think so. Does it cost us anything?
That's what we have to find out.
Yeah.
I have, I have a lot of questions about the program, so I wouldn't hesitate for, for, first of all, let it go on your, uh, assess, uh, your tax bill. Second of all, I, it's not a state agency. It's, it, it is authorized by, I believe, the state of Florida. And it is a private en- en- entity which is offering a way of financing for energy efficient, um, expenditures by households.
Right.
But it's, it's in a way, um, facilitating that kind of expenditure as opposed to other kinds of expenditures that a property owner might want. And I have, and I didn't have time, but I have a question about, they have to go through an authorized provider of that kind of service. How broad ba- base that is, you know, is it like a subset of all the, um, the, the contractors that will do the lighting or, you know, is it, is it, everybody can do it? They say you could become an authorized person, but it's not like you can go to anyone you want and you just do what, what you think. So there's, there's lots of policy issues here that I, I found troubling, so I wasn't totally sold on the, on the, on the program. And I wonder why Lee County's not participating in it, so if we want to go for, for with this, I think we need to do a lot more research. And I didn't have time to do it myself, but it just raised some red flags in my mind, so I don't know. Anybody else did any reading on it, but that was my reaction.
No, I mean, I noticed that the PACE program for girls is, or women is a wonderful, uh, program. But the details and the minutia, you know.
This is a totally different entity, this is not the PACE, this is not the same thing at all.
Well, I'd agree with Councilwoman Corbin, but why don't we just investigate it?
Yeah, we need to investigate.
Okay.
And then the next one, um, Goodwheels, we've talked about that.
Right.
And number seven, uh, Mike Gibson?
Um, yeah, I'm looking to do an aerator for the Royal Pond to kind of help, um, preemptively solve problems before they happen. I think Matt could allude a little further to it.
Sounds good to me.
I was just going to ask whether, um, someone who handles ponds has already looked at this proposal as a solution?
Yes, to, to a degree. And obviously we have, which was a fundamental problem, nutrient loading in the pond and it manifests itself in aquatic plain growth and cat tail growth. An aerator would help out to mitigate aquatic.
Prevalable lakes we have that really helps out. So I would, I would support it.
In our, in our community, we have a, a service that comes in and takes care of all of our ponds. So is, do we do that or are we just letting it go and see what happens?
No, we, we currently, we're in the process of taking this pond over from FDOT and they basically left these ponds untouched. And so we would be entering into that role.
Alright, so we, I mean, this might be one step and we probably would have to do it besides putting aerators in. We might have to do other things to take care of them.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, that's what I'm saying, yeah, so it's fifteen thousand one time, fifteen thousand annually, fifteen thousand.
It'll be fifteen thousand for the aerators, which is the hardware. Uh, the, the service would be something.
It's LED though, so it's cheaper.
Right.
No.
Matt, when you're talking to the people on the aerators, as big as that pond is, you, they may tell you that two or three is better than one.
This is for four aerators.
Wow, what a deal.
Portion of the pond, pond's ten acres, and then we looked at the south, four acres, that's where we see the aquatic growth.
That pond's ten acres, wow. I actually like bright green out.
You like blue green out?
I like it.
Work to the east coast.
So move to Stewart next week.
Alright, so, so are we in agreement, we like this?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, we do, we do have a quote.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, Greg.
Pond, um, not pond. And how many ponds like this do we have in the city other than this, this one? Is this going to be a domino effect that?
No, this is, this is a very unique situation. It's a PDOT pond, we don't have, our ponds are usually dry ponds or they're not wet ponds.
Dry ponds.
I'll take number eight.
Okay.
Um, I, I, I agree with the request, but I want to amplify something over here. This, this was in the last year's CIP, it was taken out as a whole. In my view of quote-unquote sidewalks, other than the CBD, federally funded sidewalks, is that we need to, and soon McMahon is coming in to deliver a multimodal master plan. And that should subsume sidewalks. Doesn't mean we're not going to have sidewalks, but we ought to be thinking of this holistically in terms of a network of mobility by bike and by foot. So rather than saying we would just put a sidewalk on the street, I think we need to have actually money in the CIP, which is in furtherance of like one of our top objectives, for implementation, real money, for implementation of multimodal. And that would include sidewalks within it. Maybe a sidewalk, maybe a multi-use path, but it ought to be looked at holistically.
I mean, I'm, I'm sure we're probably all familiar with it. I mean, I'm sure we're probably all familiar with that, that area. I certainly am familiar with that area, and Peter, I agree. I'll just say that simply stated, I agree. It's, it's, it's a mess.
So, you're suggesting that we wait, we get the report and integrate it?
Yeah, but I think we gotta put money in the budget.
But we then put that up as a high priority?
Yeah, I, I, but, but I don't think we need the report to put money in the budget.
Excuse me?
I don't think we need the report to put money in the CIP budget, because McMahon came in in January and gave a whole presentation. Actually, he gave it to the previous council, and also was included materially gave us, which has estimates in it for all segments of town for multimodal pathways. And so, I think when we get to talk to the, about the CIP, we should have money in this, in the CIP for that. Some of which would otherwise have related to sidewalks, so we can buy it.
But you're not, you're not proposing specifically, put two fifty in for this, this proposal?
I don't think this, listen, this is to be determined.
No, it's, no, there's no money, but you, so you're just saying it'll be?
We gotta figure it out.
We'll figure it out and put it in with the other things.
Correct. Thank you.
Okay. Number nine, the traffic light for the Benita Springs High School?
This is a request from the school board staff for the city to contribute half of the cost for the northern traffic light on Imperial in front of the planned high school. And this is a light in addition to the one that was just installed at Shangri-La Imperial.
Who owns that road?
The county owns that section.
How much do we give to the county a year in taxes, do you suppose?
Millions.
They definitely need another traffic light that close to the existing one?
Yes, they do.
They, they can't come out on the side street and use the same one?
Did they rule out a roundabout?
I, I don't know. Matt, where, where are we at on the high school and transportation around the facility?
They, they basically needed two traffic lights, one the city already planned and constructed, Shangri-La Road and Imperial. They also need one further to the north, which would be their primary entrance, and they did rule out a roundabout based on residents' concerns off the front of our road.
Based on residents' concerns?
Residents' concerns?
Not a lawful road.
Authoring residents.
This is a roundabout north?
No, I think going on, but I think.
They were looking, there, there must be some confusion. The school board was looking at a roundabout on Shangri-La Road for its southerly entrance, and it was ruled out.
He's asking a different question, which is, I believe this light is north, is on Imperial Parkway.
Correct.
Well north.
North of Shangri-La?
Right.
For the main entrance. Pardon me?
Not on Red Rock Road.
Correct.
Red Rock Road, no.
Right. So, the question is, do they consider?
Oh, you wanna put a roundabout on Imperial, so?
No, and I, I misunderstood, and, and no, they have not looked at a roundabout on Imperial.
Why not?
I, I don't have the answer for that.
I, I suggest they talk to Lee Dot, my personal view, and we can work with them on that, to crest with respect to that.
Would it, would it make any sense?
Fred, go ahead, sorry.
Well, would it make any sense to have our designated person that's for divisioning, even though it's not divisioning, to talk to our county commissioner and say, wouldn't they at least pay part of this bill or something?
Well, I don't know if we should be talking to whom, but I do feel that this is, if we were flush with cash, it'd be a different thing.
Yeah.
We're not flush with cash, okay. This is a county road. Historically, the county has had certain, you know, certain, certain people have had certain views about roundabouts. I, I talked to the school district about this, and they mentioned something about the county. I just believe it's a county road, and I would love a roundabout, and if, it would be nice if the county considered.
Say four hundred thousand dollars?
Yeah.
State?
Yeah. Carl, this is a request from the Lee County, the school staff.
Right.
What if we turn down the, down the request, what happens?
Well, that's what I've done so far, and they keep asking.
Right.
Aren't they a persistent group?
But we have a path forward. The path forward is to Lee County. Who owns the road, not us.
Yeah, I'd say, go back to Lee County.
Go back to Lee County, right.
Have Carl talk to Roger.
If they.
From Roger Ford.
If they put a roundabout up, because.
Okay, so.
Yeah, are we all right with approaching Lee County?
Well, having them approach Lee County.
Having them approach Lee County.
Right, and then no two fifty, but approach Lee County. Have them approach Lee County.
And on the roundabout point.
We want a roundabout.
Yeah, and I will tell you, you know, there've been a lot of conversations with the school district, so in fairness, I'm taking one conversation one day. They were, staff was very amenable to considering a roundabout there.
Okay. But what the county says, we'll pay for the traffic light, we're okay with that?
Well, that's.
I, well, I just got a comment question, I guess. And no offense, if, if we're so crazy about roundabouts, why do we, why do we buy a stoplight for Shangri-La? Why don't we just go around? Because it was too late. In other words, we started those initiatives with that, the arms were already ordered, and where did they go? I actually raised that, but it was too late.
Well, and, and if we would like them to go to a roundabout, would we then be considerate of putting money in towards it? Cause, cause I think a signal's cheaper than a roundabout.
Give that signal, we'll go roundabout there, go ahead.
There's two interlocal agreements. One is, we have the interlocal agreement.
I can't see everybody.
We have the interlocal agreement with the school system, and that's a easy no-brainer, what to do improvements, we just enter an interlocal agreement for that. The other one is a little more interesting, and we have an interlocal agreement, Lee County, for Imperial, as far as it being a restricted controlled access road, which requires both governments with a super, again, a super majority, to actually approve any additional access points on that road. And I, I think so the roundabout and the signal are gonna be interesting conversations. Those, those are exist, there is an existing interlocal for Imperial.
Any more on this?
No, I don't have anything.
Okay, great. Item ten, Arlene?
I referred to this a little bit earlier. In this current budget here, the proposed budget, you have forty-five thousand. That only covers the contract with FGCU for the state mandated changes. At a previous council meeting, we approved both the, the changes to include the optional element workshops that we talked about, as well as the incorporated BNEV visioning into the conference of plan, and we're starting that now in this current fiscal year. So, we would need an increase of fifty thousand to that planning.
I don't know why it's a funding request.
No, I, I think.
I think it was, it was, it came in, those contracts came in after the budget was prepared, that's why.
Okay.
So, council's okay with adding those amount, you have an amount, okay?
Okay, item eleven, the skateboard, or skate park repair?
I actually have a couple of slides I wanna show you, give you different options for that.
Fred, popcorn?
Yes.
It's just a couple, I promise, it's not a lot. What I wanted to show you is, based on last year's budget, is we did have discussions about the wooden understructure is rotting away at the current skate park. The quotes we got were for around sixty thousand dollars.
To repair?
To repair, to repair that underwood structure. Well, once we actually started reaching out to, once it was in, and then budget time, we reached out to different vendors, and the cost had gone up considerably. So, the approximate quote ended up being around a hundred and twenty thousand. We did talk to the company that does our current maintenance. They said we were okay to wait and go and have a look at different options again this year, before we decided to do sort of an emergency sort of fund, to try to get those funds. Based on those budget workshops last year, we did take into consideration what the, the kids that all came to discuss wanted. So, I did look up and get exact renderings and quotes for concrete options that would either be placed at the current site location, or would be moved to Depot Park, where it would be open to the public non-membership, because we do have a restroom facility there that is open dawn to dusk. So, they would have restroom facilities, and it could be moved, because we do have a lot of kids that, because they don't wanna pay the fee, they do skate downtown and all around Riverside Park, so this would give them an actual skate park to go to. So, we do have different options. This is one that was just built in California. It is approximately three thousand square feet, and around that hundred and thirty thousand dollar cost. To make it fit into their city park system, they did make it look more park-like. So, this is one option that we looked at, given that to fix the current wood is a hundred and twenty thousand. Other options we looked at, we did go bigger, because our current skate park is twenty thousand square feet. But a lot of that is open space, it's not all ramps, so that's why we did look at different structures. This is one that's four thousand square feet and approximately a hundred and sixty-five thousand. It does have more bowls, so it's more like our current skate park. So, this would be one that's more comparable to what we currently have. But again, this is in a park-like setting, not where we currently have. Next, we go bigger, sixty-five hundred, then we do go up considerably in cost, because it is concrete at two hundred and sixty-five thousand. Eight thousand square feet, you're at three hundred and sixty-five, and then just to give you what a twenty thousand square foot would look like in cost. It is quite large, in terms of bowls and things like that, it, it is bigger than what we currently have, but it would be around eight hundred to nine hundred thousand dollars to build. Concrete, though, is a better option in terms of maintenance. It's virtually maintenance-free on our end, and all of this will last at least twenty years.
What do we have now?
Wood.
And how many square feet?
It is twenty thousand square feet, because it's wood and no, it's not all bowls and ramps. Here's our current skate park, and it is, again, the twenty thousand square feet. This a hundred and twenty thousand will only buy you about five years, until you have to do it again. So, that is the difference with wood in Florida. It doesn't hold up as well in other parts of the country, mainly up north.
Can you go back to one and two, if you don't mind? So, that's.
So, this is.
But that's a fifth the size of.
It is four thousand for a hundred and sixty-five thousand square feet.
It's a fifth the size of what we have now.
Correct. And then here's the one that looks smaller.
As compared to, as may I even notice, ramp square footi- ramp square footage versus total square footage? Right. Do you have that number?
I don't, and the reason I don't, well, I do pretty much. It's, it's approximately about eight thousand, which would be closer to this one. It was there, cause you all saw it, right? It's a little bigger than this one, in terms of ramp square footage. We do have a lot of open space, that's why ours is this one. This one is two hundred and sixty-five thousand.
Are you saying there's a lot of kids who, so I was there the other day, it was hot as heck, and there were a bunch of kids out there.
That is our summer camp?
That's just, well, Saturday.
Oh, then yes, we do have, well, yeah.
But you're saying on top of that, there are kids who, the minimal fee?
Mm-hmm.
But you're saying there are kids who can't afford that minimal fee, who would otherwise?
I'm not sure if it's more affordability, or, you know, we do have rules, and we staff it, so we do make sure they follow those rules. And we do have specific hours, cause it's only, you know, hours that we have staffed at the rec center. One that would be open due to a law change, we are now exempt under the new state statutes for liability for skate parks. So, now, we can have them open to the public without us staffing them or out, without charging, so they can be in other places.
Is the reason you want this not next to the rec center, or you just think, well, why do you want it to be at the depot?
Um, I think we're gonna get more participation if it's not at the rec center, because of course, even if we leave it open to the public, you know, we do have gates and fences and things like that. If we choose to replace the wood, which, if that's something we do, I, that is a suggestion I have, that we do take down the gates and fence and leave it open dawn to dusk like other parks. Because of the law change, and then we would no longer charge, because it does give more accessibility. The rec center, though, they would only have access to restrooms when we're open.
Right.
If we moved it to Depot, those restrooms are open dawn to dusk, so they would have restroom facilities the same length of time the park would be open.
And, and if we move it, we can use different funding, because we're building a new one, not rebuilding it?
Correct. This would be maintenance funding, so this would go under operating, so it would be general fund. If I moved it somewhere else, you could use parking there.
Nicole, I know that this was an issue last year, but actual usage of the skate park, I know it's, I know it's relatively used on Saturday afternoons, now that I've been there on Saturday afternoons, playing pickleball, by the way.
And under the AC?
We're hooked. Yeah, absolutely in the AC. But this was an issue last year about overall usage of the skate park, and the public investment needed to either repair what we have, or build something new. Is it worth it to the taxpayer? What's the usage?
Well, our, based on last year of us, there was a possibility that, we have to do something. We can't do nothing, or we close, because the wood will start to rot away, and they can't keep it open and functional, so. We did look at numbers, and the reason we did not automatically put it in the budget last year was because those numbers were decreasing. And now, because of that, our numbers have increased, but not necessarily in terms of daily usage, the number of members have. But I did send you, or Anne sent you all copies of the usage. On, you know, on average, there are days we get no, you know, no one, but we do, during the league, we get about fifteen.
Well, the numbers here are thirty-two, thirty-three.
Yeah, and then on the weekends, the numbers are definitely higher.
I think the whole year.
Forty's and fifty's sometimes.
Yes, and that was during an event.
Yeah, and in that, that's what I thought, and then.
Yeah, we put on.
The other, the other high, higher number was forty. Are they the same clients, or?
They are the, they are pretty much the exact same ones, yeah.
I had the same concern that Carl has, you know, the amount of money that it would cost to repair that, if we're not getting the usage out of it, I don't know.
I know, I know, I'm with you. Especially how one of the kids that marched in here last year to advocate for was my own kid, who's never been over there, I might add, but his friends, his friends go over there. Be that as it may.
Friends in high places.
Yeah, yeah. I, I don't know, you know, when you look at the usage rate versus the cost, I mean, I, I, it's not rocket science, it's, hey, hey, hey.
Is there, is there any way we could do it like in pieces, you know, do part of it?
It, unfortunately, no, cause it, it's all rotting away.
No, I mean, take it down and then do one of these other things.
Yeah, I mean, we can take it down and remove it completely, and then decide at a later point to build a new one either here or somewhere else.
I'm not in favor of spending a hundred and twenty thousand for that. It doesn't make any sense to me.
Right, yeah, for five years of time.
I'm not sure what to do as a next step.
Well, and also, just to, to mention this, in terms of just replacing the wood, I, I do have maintenance costs to fix this wood throughout that time period, too. We do spend approximately three to four thousand dollars a year just making repairs to the top pieces of wood, not an entire understructure of rotten wood. So, there are extra costs on top of that one twenty.
So, let's just, you know, hypothetically, not even hypothetically, maybe, maybe realistically, with the usage that we have. What, and, and we stick, it's one twenty to replace the wood, or it's one twenty to have the three thousand square foot, right?
Or that is one thirty.
One thirty, okay. What, based on usage, is that one big enough?
Um, based on usage of our current usage numbers, yes.
Okay. And if we have an explosion in usage, hypothetically, could we add on to this one in future years?
You can add on to any of them. This one's a little more difficult, because it does encompass, this one would be a little easier to do. And to add on to, and this one is more user-friendly compared to what we currently have. But this one would be the, if you are thinking of the possibility of adding on, this would be your better choice.
Yeah, how much, this one is the one thirty-something?
That's one sixty-five.
One fifty-five. That's what, I, I'd go for that.
Council, what do you think?
I, I would also lean towards that, and having it at a location where they can use it anytime, you know, preferably towards the downtown area. That way, they're not skating on what we don't want them to skate on. And I think you will see usage go up, because, you know, they're not being watched. I know we've had problems with kids being told they can't skate, because the lightning alarm's going off, but somewhere else, you know, they're gonna. going off, but somewhere else, you know, they're gonna skate. They're not gonna leave, but, but we don't have that liability anymore, so.
Do we have a good feeling that the usage will increase if we move it to Depot Park?
Um, it is a sense we're getting. It is a guess, but I think it is a pretty good guess in terms of the amount of the skaters that are skating at the artist cottages at the band shell now, that I think it is a, it's a very good guess, and they can use it seven days a week, done to dust, like all of our other parks. Depot does have the restroom facility that's open the same length of time, so, I mean, it kind of is conducive to that.
With it not being behind the chain links and...
Watch.
Guard and watch. Are we worried, since this is concrete, are we worried about any vandalism, tagging, spray painting?
Um, I mean, those are always, you know, issues that we do face in our park system, and our staff takes care of it. I mean, but that's always, I, we do have camera systems at Depot, so, I mean, those are things that we could add extra on to that.
Then my other question kind of goes back to Mike, since he has the business down there. If we have it down there, lack of better terms, is that gonna draw all the skaters down there and then maybe increase what you may be seeing now a little bit of?
Yeah.
Is that gonna make it more concentrated?
Yeah, we, we don't do, you know, skateboard stuff currently.
No, I don't mean you. I don't mean for you.
Oh, this, I did.
I meant for, but hey, traffic, traffic, boys, these kids running around there.
We see a lot of kids down there skating. They're up on the, the band shell. They're, they're, you know, basically everywhere.
No, I understand that. I guess that's now when there's nothing down there for them to do other than that. Now, we're gonna put this there, aren't they all gonna be drawn to that? If this is full, they're gonna leech out.
Well, I think this has more what they're looking to do.
It's not what they want, yeah.
I'm not, I'm not opposed to, I, I love to see that, which I had one. I had one that.
Where in Depot Park would you put it, or how many trees do you count?
We actually have the open space. When you're facing, it's towards Island Park and towards the river. It would be just past the fencing where the natural playground is, which is open space currently. So, you know, we wouldn't be looking at removing any trees. We would set it within the tree so there's shade, too. That would help out for that. I mean, even though the current skate park doesn't have shade, but that would definitely help. We would nestle it in, and that's what this company does, is they put skate parks in parks to nestle them into what you already have, not do land clearing and these big monstroses.
Nicole, one suggestion I have is if we do go forward, I would get a group of some of these kids and have them give input into what they look like for me.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Rather than us adults figuring out what rails they need.
Yeah, that's what we would definitely expect, yeah.
And wherever we put it, just make sure, I'm sure this place knows what we do, how to do it, but I'll pull a thing out of Council for, I would suggest that they put it so, if we are gonna expand, it's expandable. We're not handstreamed to what, to where they stick it at.
Yeah.
And I guess...
That's, that's actually another reason why we suggested Depot. Then, you know, if we expand too far, there is the issue of having to remove some of the trees, but that is where we have open space for the possibility of an expansion if we need it.
We need to increase that one-fifty-five any for what's called a design fee, is that...
That was gonna be my other suggestion, piggybacking off of what Counsel, Counsel Flynn said. If we're gonna ask these kids what they want, I think we ought to up that at least to one-seventy-five.
Well, you would actually have to, only because the more things you add to it, the greater the cost.
Right, that's what I mean.
So that's what this costs, if you did it exactly like that one, so...
Including the fees?
Um, this company, including the fees, if you sole source to this company, I, yes, I can get it.
So we could write some kind of a RFP that would be built right into it, so they could do it.
You could do a design build where, you know, and we could go with that company and, I mean, that would be an easier...
I think, I think this is a perfect solution. Like Greg says, so make sure there's a design where you can easily add on. It's got a design add-on built into the sketchy layout or something.
Yep.
So I'd, I'd be for it. I'd just make a point, which is, we have to talk macro about the CIP. We now have, right, we now have more in the CIP for the skate park, which I'm for, than we have for the quadrant. So with that caveat, I would say put it in. What'd you say, Greg, one-seventy-five?
I said one-seventy-five, just to give a ten thousand dollar buffer to kids, say, hey, man, we'd really like to have two rail, two slide rails instead of just one.
Right. Well, you may want to landscape around it, start doing that, too.
In terms of landscaping, there is some things you do have to do. You can see how that tree is elevated from a curve. You would have to do things like that so they don't run into it.
Right.
So we do have to, it does cost a little more than this general landscaping and everything.
All right, Counsel, if we talked around it, talked at it?
Well, I need to, because I still feel about, I'm concerned about the usage, and I guess this is a lot of money, and we're looking at cutting back here, cutting back there, and I know that the skate park is a wonderful thing, but we're not having the usage. I'm sorry, I can't support it.
Okay.
But remainder of Counsel, have it with Amy?
I think we should look at it in conjunction with some of the other things that we're looking at, because I think it would be a lower priority than some of the other things, but I definitely wouldn't repair it. I would take the old wood down. That would be the first step.
And, and just so you are aware, we did just have our maintenance guy up. We had a issue with, we came in one morning and there was a hole, so we did have them have to come fix that. We're not sure how the hole happened, but it wasn't a maintenance issue. But he did kind of give us a timeframe of, you know, what we have left in terms of, and he, others, certain sections are worse than others, so I'm not sure if he wants to start taking pieces of it down and stay open, or things, or we take it all down at once, but we are looking at somewhere around probably January timeframe.
Okay. I'd be for it.
I'm, just a quick statement. I'm for it a hundred percent, and plus the fact that we're gonna move now, going back to what Mike had said, we can, instead of using general fund money for this, we can pull it out of the two park funds, the regional park impact fees or the community park impact fees, which the two of them, together have an unassigned fund balance of about one point one million dollars.
Yeah, but the money's really kind of...
But we want that for the bike.
The money's kind of, I hear what you're saying.
Yeah, but I mean, it's safe.
The money's kind of fungible. We have a lot of other stuff.
Yeah, but we also got one point, almost one point nine in undesignated carry fund in parking rent for this year that could be carried forward also. So, I mean, I think, I'll put it out there, if we do this, I won't bring up my, I won't bring up the wall this year.
Well, we could turn the wall this way.
Yeah, we're turning the wall this way, so that...
Well, it's good. I can take the wall and hold the landscaping.
Fred, you have something?
Well, the only thing I was gonna suggest, I think we ought to at least leave this skate thing there until we decide, because I suspicion if it was decided to build a new one, that the demolition, the old one, could be included in, legal into the new project.
Um, possibly. The contractor that builds the other one only builds concrete parks. They don't build wood, but we could get a separate contractor to do, take down the wood.
But hopefully we could town it as part of the new, new thing.
And, and I would say keep it open as long as possible, remove things that are dangerous.
So this sounds like a move forward with investigation, right?
No, I think it's, put it in the budget.
We're looking for an answer, put it in the budget.
Yes, we gotta see where we are. I think that's what I would suggest.
It's in the budget, but the writing's gray.
Yeah, I understand. It's intensive.
So we're gonna add this at one-seventy-five?
Right.
Right?
And then one little caveat we did wanna throw in, just because you are, are, we're discussing the pool, there is a cheaper option that we have been investigating.
Can we hold off on the...
But yes, I just wanted you to see it. That's all I wanted you to see.
Actually, I'm so pleased you put that up, because that was my suggestion to you.
Oh, okay.
I had observed this in another community, and I said, instead of having a whole pool, why don't we put something like, I don't know if two hundred thousand dollars is a good number, but you could have a much smaller one, but I think that would satisfy the young people.
The two hundred thousand dollar number is for one that's approximately two thousand square feet. The reason we, we did this is because we looked at, if we did tear down the old skate park, what could we put there? Before, our options were pickleball courts and playgrounds and things like that, or open spaces. It's greatly needed for the kids to play in, too. But this was an option just because, you know, we were looking at other options for the pool. This is one cheaper and with a lot less operating cost, because you don't have to staff it. There's no pool, so it is open to the public, and that's the, the estimated cost.
Okay.
We're just, we're thinking about, but let's...
Yeah, let's move forward at number twelve. Thank you, Nicole.
I would skip twelve for now.
Wanna skip twelve for now?
Well, yeah. I mean, I think it comes into the whole CIP discussion. You're gonna end up, in my view, bringing in the whole CIP discussion.
Yeah, that's probably a very good point. Okay.
It's the most important thing here, but I would just, wait till we get to that.
All right.
Is that all right?
That's, that's fine. Is that all right, Counsel?
Yeah.
All right, thirteen, been saying for a few years now, you know, with our, what do you wanna say, our enhanced landscaping, our walkability, our connectability, our bikeability, our downtown improvements. This is just in that vein to explore what these might cost. We really don't have any idea, Carl, right, what these might cost? And the thought here would be something out on seventy-five on the Naples-Banita Springs border, something on the north end, on the, you know, Estero-Banita Springs line, just to explore. We already exploring costs on this?
Not yet. We were waiting for fuller direction on this.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I'm saying to Counsel.
Well, I know, but there's been another discussion about a possible monument of some type on forty-one on the, on the Imperial Bridge, so we really haven't looked. I know that there's opportunities certainly out on seventy-five. We'd have, we'd have to look at what other cities have done just to get a feel for it and bring those back to Counsel and see, because in order to narrow down to a price, we kind of have to know what you want.
Sure.
And I think we have to go through that process yet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I'd like to clarify then, what we talked about in the Art and Health Places which was a starter amount, and that was specifically for Banita Beach Road and I-75, but if we're talking about all the entryways, that might be a little bit different, because there might be a different feature, a different scale, different size of what you'd be looking for at each of them. So several years ago, before the recession, there was a line item that had welcome signs in it specifically, designs, and then that was stopped during that time. So expanding to all the different entrances...
Well, I think he's talking seventy-five, one north, one south.
That's what I had thought. I didn't know, I wasn't aware of the one on forty-one.
We briefly talked about...
Yeah.
But this is something that the city would have, we couldn't get it through enhancement from the Department of Transportation.
We still have to investigate that.
So it does not necessarily be on our side, which we could have helped with that possibility.
Well, if you remember with the Banita Beach visioning, one of the last slides you saw was that there is a possibility for enhanced landscaping, that there is a, a program through the Department of Transportation that you could work with. That wouldn't necessarily be a monument, but there might be other features that provide that presence.
And that's at the interchange zone.
Can I make a suggestion? I don't think it's helpful or not, which is, to me, this, I mean, we talked about Beach Road and seventy-five. There was mention of the Imperial Bridge. That's not happening tomorrow, but just begin to think about it. To me, this is a subset of urban design and urban design standards in a city, of what the town looks like, and we don't have anything in the budget for that. I talked briefly to Carl, and, you know, we're not trying to spend a zillion dollars on it, but, you know, maybe there's a way to look holistically at all of that, including entrance signs. Because we do have entrance signs that we just shattered last night upon the prices board, one of which evidently doesn't look so great, you know. So maybe we can put that together under that umbrella. I don't know how much money Carl would make sense, fifty, seventy-five thousand dollars. This is not for all monuments. This is Torrid, and it is one of our strategic priorities, better urban design standards. And we have resources in-house. You've talked about that somewhat.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I just, I don't know what the number would be.
Neither do I.
If you wanted, I mean, if you wanna plant a number in there...
Plant a number.
As a, as a placeholder and a start, we can certainly do that.
Right.
Whatever Counsel wants to do on that number.
I'd like to suggest that. I mean, as in further and so forth.
What do you think, fifty?
Yeah, fifty to seventy-five.
Fred, okay.
Sixty-two-five.
Sixty-two-five.
Is there any possibility that some of this would be to include a tastefully designed multi-use pass and all that?
Well, it's...
Well, if it is, then my point is, we might be able to use some of those apart special funds that could be used for that, given pay for the design, part of the design.
Right, but I think, yeah, sure, I would agree, but I would just comment, which is, we're into the general fund here. I mean, we've talked about the road and park impacts, the money, that's gonna get used off the bill.
Yeah.
But, yes.
Okay. So at thirteen, as a placeholder, do we wanna put sixty-two-five?
Yeah.
Okay.
Make it sixty.
Make it sixty?
Just so it doesn't look like...
Okay. Sixty thousand as a placeholder for number thirteen?
Right.
Okay, great. Fourteen, this was a request for Counsel to fund the rec, rec center?
Well, we've been...
And we've been through all that, so do we need to take any further action on the rec center at the moment? Okay.
I don't think so.
We don't wanna put anything in for...
Yeah, right.
Whatever number you had.
I just said like a hundred thousand and...
Yep, and that was, so it's...
Yeah, we've already made a note of that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Ah, moving right along, number fifteen.
It's gone. I think, right, forty, what did we say?
Um, yeah, forty thousand on fifteen?
Mm-hmm, yep.
Okay.
And then sixteen.
Sixteen, which I guess is the same thing.
Isn't that the same?
Is it the same thing, fifteen and sixteen?
It's really not.
Okay, yeah, dive in there a little bit.
It was fifty.
You had fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand.
Number fifteen.
Fifteen was fifty thousand, pardon me.
Now, so the previous discussion...
And then sixteen, Carl, yeah, thank you.
The previous discussion, today, was about this program of preserving homes...
Right.
That are designated historic, all right? That money here that you've already put into the budget is not anything to do very much with what was requested in an email that was just sent to you in the last couple of days, which is more aligned, that list being more aligned, it was John Pano, and that list was more aligned with the request that the Downtown Business Alliance had listed. In terms of having kiosks and signage and all those kinds of things. And again, remember the, you know, we're not even gonna be complete with that project until September of next year.
Right.
So we've got some time, if you wanna consider those later on.
I would agree with, that's what you said in your email.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And plus, I think, Arlene, didn't you say we had ten thousand in there for education and, and brochures and stuff like that? Can it be used?
That's the Historic Preservation Committee's funding. So, for example, when a pro, when a house or a property gets designated, there's a marker that goes on that house that says the year.
Oh, that's what that's for.
Yes, it's, it's also, they have a program of documenting oral history from pioneer families so that stories can be passed down and documented. So it's, it's really the functions of the Historic Preservation Board.
Okay. So sixteen, yeah.
I think we can delay those other requests.
Yeah, okay. Number seventeen, possible donation of land for the multi-use path on Terry Street. Arlene?
Yes.
This is kind of a fun one.
Yes, so I've got some maps.
Sorry for the smaller ones.
Not exactly for free.
Not exactly. Sort of for free.
Bonus for free.
I did get a call from a, a property owner, and you can see that from here, they, they own a, a pathway that FPN lines have an easement to be on, so they actually are the property owner. There's two sheets.
Yeah.
Right now, it's sort of a dirt pathway.
Move my other chair down here.
There are, there are several, this is between Banita Fairways and Highland Woods, and there are several residents that currently casually use it as a biking and walking path through there, through the power lines. They've made, the property owners made a proposal to donate the property to us if they would be willing to keep it as a pedestrian bicycle pathway. In looking at it a little bit further and seeing where connectivity could happen, the the second map I gave you is, um, Pueblo Bonito is the owner of the pathways that heads further north. Uh, I did briefly speak to one of their board members and they would be willing to bring it up to their board of directors to also possibly donate the lands to us so that we could actually make it a more substantial bicycle and pedestrian pathway. And speaking with Community Development Block grant folks, um, are, are coming up. We need to provide to them a designated project by August first. We've talked a little bit about that possibly being one of the quadrant plans. The, the challenge with that is that the funds have to be used, the project has to be complete in eight, within eighteen months, starting October first. Um, I did propose this potential project of creating a bicycle pedestrian pathway with the understanding that the city would be the owner of the lands. Um, it does, um, on, on quick look, it does qualify as being in the low to moderate income jurisdiction, so it would be a potential eligible project. The use of multi-use pathways is an eligible funding project, and it is something that if we moved on fairly quickly with the donation of the lands, we could most likely be complete within eighteen months, which is the required period to complete the project. So we wanted to give this to you as a potential option. Um, on the July twentieth meeting, we do need to have a response from council on the specific project that we'd like to do because of our interlocal agreement with the county, we have to designate the project by August first. So we wanted to propose this to you as an idea. The funding cycle would provide two hundred and ninety-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty-four dollars. That's the estimate of CDBG funds that would be available to put towards any improvements needed on the multi-use pathway.
I think it's a fabulous idea. Obviously, there's always concern and we have to deal with security issues and such. Um, but I would, I would go forward with it. This, by the way, this is the old Seaboard Railroad line, you know? It was abandoned in the twenties and handed over to the power company and then it gave land away to adjoining landowners. But I think it's something definitely worth exploring.
Does FPNL have a problem with us doing something underneath there?
Um, we would have to reach out to them there to continue that conversation, but as it is now, the, the property owner has an agreement. There's nothing in the, I did ask the property owner, there's nothing in the agreement that prohibits um, multi-modal use on the path. There are certain storage or different, there are, there's less than, she would be happy to give us a copy of that contract for us to review as well.
And I guess then my only other question is, is it would, I am assuming pop out right there at Pueblo Bonito?
Mm-hmm.
That if they wanted to go out to Old Forty-One or something like that?
Right.
Have we approached Imperial Harbor, maybe doing something right there with their Imperial Harbor Boulevard, which is right at the edge of the other?
Yep.
Right, we haven't reached out any further than those two because actually this just actually started the last week and a half that I got the information. So, um, we could just continue what you were saying.
No, no.
We, we wanted to gauge council's interest in this before we started talking to a bunch of people. Is that all of a sudden you get people all excited or upset? Do we have, do we have four yeses?
Do we have four yeses?
Okay, we have four yeses, okay.
So we would.
We might have seven, but we have at least four.
Well, then we would continue conversations with the property owner and bring a proposal for the CDVG program at your July twentieth meeting.
Okay.
To move forward and continue conversations with Pueblo Bonito as well.
Great. Thank you, Arlene. And number eighteen.
I think it's fifteen.
We've handled that. What's that?
I think it's fifteen again.
It's fifteen again?
Isn't it?
Yes.
Okay, so again, it's fifteen.
All right. Awesome. All right, fifteen. All right. Mr. O'Flynn, thanks for expediting that. So that's great. Um, now, where do we want to go from here? All right. I know Councilman Schlauchton needs to leave at four. Right, um, and we're here till five or later. I, I don't know. I just, I just, I don't want to rush through the important things that we need to do, but we obviously need to get through them, so what do we think?
Can I make a?
What, yeah, where do we want to go next?
Can I make a suggestion as to what council thinks? The thing we skipped on this list was number twelve, Beach Road Visioning, um, which relates to the CIP.
Are we doing something tomorrow with that?
No, that's, uh, man, um, well, it is, but it's not the CIP. If I can make a few comments about the CIP and see what people think, I would appreciate that.
Sure, fine by me.
Is that all right, guys?
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, so Ann's done, and the whole gang has done an awful lot of hard work here, to say the least, obviously, is to be acknowledged. And this morning, uh, in an attempt, you know, to be constructive, she came up with this proposal that we've got, which is, you know, basically moving money out of the bottom of page twenty-five and moving it back into the CIP. I'd like to make a few comments though, which is, we spent a month working on putting projects on hold, right? And we had a list of projects on hold, and that exercise had nothing to do with funding the Old Forty-One project. Uh, it had everything to do with trying to open up numbers for the quadrant, or we've come to call it quadrant, which is Beach Road and US forty-one. So we went through all that work.
Flyover.
Uh, right. Mill flyover, right. So, it is the case that on May eighteenth, a green sheet, totally well-meaning, came in, uh, on a consent agenda to take some of that money and move it to Old Forty-One. And, uh, that green sheet said this would simplify the budget process, okay? Now, all kinds of hard work has been done, but my take on the CIP is we did all that work to be able to put money into the corner, understanding that we would go back and look at some of those items that were put on hold. And now, we've got a CIP which has basically nothing in it for what we were putting the four, the five million dollars aside for. Nothing, okay? And some, and on top of that, almost three million of it was thrown into Old Forty-One, and we went through that the other day, that the cash cost of Old Forty-One is massive. Over and above the borrowing, over and above what has, uh, coming, what's coming in right now from Lake County. And we're left with, um, on the list, on the sixth column here on pages one fourteen and after that, some funding on holds, um, some blank that were funding on holds, like the famous wall, you know, zero there, right? We have other ones that were funding on holds, like it was either a million one fourteen or seven eighty-three, depending upon whether it was March or April, for additional landscaping that's not even in here, although there is a landscape line. And then, we have other things on hold that have now been put into funding. For example, East Terry Street, two million dollar project, that was on hold, that's in here being funded. And I know our staff was trying to create a budget that kind of worked, and I thanked them for that. But to me, what we've ended up with is that work about putting on hold has yielded nothing in this budget.
Well, that was my point earlier.
Right, right, for the CIP. So, I kind of feel that, so, one of the reasons I was asking questions about the fifth and the sixth column before is if, uh, back on page one fifteen, once, if, once, is the total, it's on one.
One nineteen. Total for the car.
I think one seventeen, is it nineteen?
No, no, you're right, one nineteen.
All right, one seventeen.
One seventeen, you're right, I'm sorry.
I think what this is saying is that, um, we've got six million eight, that's that fifth column, the fourth, okay? Forget about the whole number because that's a small portion of what we had, or held, okay? And then we've got, this is, so to speak, staff's budget, two million two in this, in the CIP for next year, two thousand seventeen. You add those two numbers up, rough math, it's nine million bucks, right? Six, six-eight and two-two. Is that fair to do, Carl?
It adds to nine, yes.
Yeah, well, what I mean is that's avail, yeah, no.
Right.
No, it adds, no, it isn't fair to add. In other words, that is kind of what's available in this budget for CIP. Before you get to page twenty-five, below the line, opening and closing, in other words. That's, that's why I asked before, is it six million eight in that number? So that's, if you don't follow what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Let me be specific rather than confuse people. Sorry? My point is.
We're looking here at six ninety-nine, and one ninety-nine saying we have.
So my, so my point is, I'm trying to see what we have to work with. So if you go to page twenty-five, and you have, that's your, look at a glance. So your, your opening balance on October first is seventeen million, five oh seven. Are you with me?
I don't.
All right. And you've got to take the building fund out.
No, not really, just. What? Let me ask one question real quick, maybe, and this may help me.
Good.
The seventeen-five, is that the operating budget to run this city for the year?
It's a balance of funds.
It's free from each of these funds.
Okay.
From the general fund and then all the restricted funds, which are special revenue funds.
It's, it's, it's kind of, it's the, it's the, it's the funds, in other words, the general fund, the gas fund, the building fund, et cetera, right? That's that number, all right. So, to go back to that, when I asked about can you add them up, I was basically asking the same question I asked two hours ago, and I think I got an answer I liked, which is, if, if you took the six-eight.
Right.
And the two-two, back on one seventeen.
Mm-hmm.
And you spent all of that, that would not adversely affect the seventeen-five oh seven. Right? The seventeen-five oh seven is net after those numbers.
That's correct, because these, these are budgets.
Right. That's correct, right. So that's what I'm getting at. So, the reason it's proper to add those two is, back on page one seventeen, is that's basically saying we have nine million dollars baked in to this CIP.
Just maybe to correct you, why wouldn't you add the one, the one-nine also?
Because that's a subset of the six-eight.
Oh, sure?
No, no, no.
No, I think it's in addition too.
That's addition.
Oh, it's, thank you.
So it's actually ten-nine, ten point nine.
Ten-nine.
Just like that, you found us two million to it, not better?
Great, great, all right, so, all right. So, thank you, great. So, so my suggestion is, if I follow, we spent a month going through every one of these things, building up the on-holds, and rather than go through and reconstruct every one of those on-holds again, we'd be basically retracing every step we took in the month of April and May, all right, if we went through it. So, what I'd like the challenge staff to do is to go back, put in, so, if you look at what staff started out with, let's, let's take the priorities, what I would like to call the priorities, which is fixing the Beach Road dissection. That's on page one fifteen on the bottom.
But it's also on one fourteen.
It's also on one fourteen.
Yeah, it starts on that.
Okay, so about one fourteen on the bottom, one four-two, is that?
It, there's actually some funding for both of them.
Which is what, three hundred thousand or something?
Yeah, the sixty-three seventeen, three eighty-three fifty-nine.
Three eighty-three, oh fifty-nine, right, okay. So, what, what I'd like to do is go back to what our priorities were and the work we did for a month in the service of those priorities, which was to make money available for this quadrant study, okay? Put that number in, the CIP budget, and to me, that's a five million dollar number for, for next year. And then, rather than sit here for five hours, like we sat here for ten hours going through CIP a month ago, ask staff to go back and play with the other, what'd you just find, two million, right?
One-nine.
One-nine, so, yeah, so, and, and to play with the, um, so where are we? Ten, eleven million?
Eleven, yeah.
All right. Now granted, that includes three hundred thousand, all right? And, and see what part of that could be moved to two thousand and eighteen. So we're basically doing what we set out to do in the beginning of when we started the city here, which is to make that quadrant priority, and what we've got here is it's flipped. The quadrant's out in eighteen.
Can we, Ann, can we do that? Can you move it forward without having it designated as a reserve fund?
Well, I just.
Or would we designate it as a quadrant reserve fund and put X number in there, the one point nine or a million dollars or two million into it, and it just keeps carrying forward like any other reserve account?
Can I just clarify something?
Sure.
That what's under these, and maybe I should never use the word uncommitted, but it means it's uncommared.
Right.
These are all the same projects that you previously decided not to put on hold?
I understand that.
Okay.
But we, but we, all the one, right, but all the ones we put on hold, almost all the money was grabbed and thrown to Old Forty-One. We were doing that for this project. So what I'm suggesting is, I don't want to go through that, I don't see the exercise of going through that again. Have staff go back and reconsider and see what they can do. I'm not saying you can find five million bucks here, all right? But, but there's some portion of this that I'd like you to go back and do. So I don't know otherwise what the exercise is. We're going to go through and repeat what we did for ten hours, uh, a month ago?
But you would also be okay with us saying that the one point nine billion from the on-hold exercise to put that, put all that towards the, um, the two projects, the Banita Beach Road project?
Yeah, it's, assuming what Greg has said is right, it's all in play. Yeah.
So you're saying all those remaining projects on hold will not be funded?
No, I'm not saying that.
Well, if you're going to use it for alternative uses.
No, no, no. What I'm saying is, there's eleven million dollars available.
I don't see how there's eleven million. Is there eleven million dollars available?
It's a total of.
No, there is not a eleven million dollars.
There's eleven in the CIP, and it's six-eight, one-nine, two-two. You don't agree with that?
No.
Okay. What's the number in the CIP?
Is there eleven million dollars available?
Well, the two-two is, is proposed for next year.
Right.
They're sixteen-seventeen. The six point eight million is what's has budgeted for the projects that were not put on hold, and we have not spent the money yet.
But they're still for projects, so.
You know, I'm not saying they're available, but I mean.
But you're saying, you're saying that these things under uncommitted budget, that we're going to consider that to be used for the quadrant study?
What I'm saying is, we put five million dollars aside, we went through a process for over a month to find the five million, and now it's no longer here. So, it's odd, it, it was.
No, I guess what, I guess what I'm.
It was put into the Old Forty-One project.
No, I think like three million, I think that's where this one point nine comes from, is the remainder of that five that we found.
Yeah.
I agree with that. I agree. What I'm saying is, I'm trying to figure out a process, I'm not trying to figure out a solution.
No, I understand.
All right?
When you gave the solution, which I don't.
The, the six point eight, is that, it says uncommitted, but what, what is that?
Well.
Is that money that's just sitting in an account?
It's not, it's highly restricted, like the two hundred and twenty-five thousand is a grant of PDC. So we, we can't do anything with that other than that.
I'm not.
But, but it's, it's allocated for something, it just hasn't been spent yet.
Yeah, to these projects.
I'm not trying to confuse anything here. I'm, I'm really not, but, you know, like Peter's saying, we went through methodically, line by line by line by line by line, came up with five million dollars. Let me just ask a basic question. What do, what does, I know what I thought it was for. Not, not, not to do that, just to throw it into the forty-one project, Old Forty-One project. What, what did we think that five million dollars was for?
I think it wa.
Now, I just want to start with that basic question, Amy.
What we were doing was setting aside projects so that when we were going to look at all these projects in total, and we were going to prioritize them, that we were going to say we're going to do this one versus this one, second one, third one. I don't think we had, I mean, I don't think we anticipated, well, we have to pay for the downtown project, and that's what we, we basically took three million of that and put into the downtown project, which just finished that project and said, let's go forward, all right?
Right.
You can't spend money twice, so we did it once, and now we have to take out of, with the remaining money, two million dollars, and whatever we think we can anticipate getting in our next revenue, because we'll get new revenues in the next budget, and then go through the prioritizing process again. I don't think we have eleven million dollars. I, I just don't see it. I mean, it's like.
And Greg, yeah, Greg, now, when we went, and I just want to stick to this for the minute if we can.
We have ten million.
When we went through, line by line by line, what was your thought that we were going to do with that money?
One, my thought was, is that, the, and I made that statement, this council didn't really either A, like or approve, agree with what the previous council did, so let's relook at those, and let's try and save some money for maybe something that this new council sees as a higher priority than something else. And two meetings ago, we decided that three million of it's going to go for the downtown. And, two meetings ago, we decided that three million of it's going to go for the, the downtown redevelopment, which leaves one point nine left, and I'm kind of jumping back and forth here, Amy and Peter. You're, you're right, there is ten point nine available in the CPI budget, but of that ten point nine, six point eight has kind of been allocated for this, and the two point two is allocated for this upcoming budget CPI. The only, let's call it, I hate to even use this word, fluff money that we have to play with is the one point nine that is basically unencumbered, undesignated, carried forward from the CPI that we save.
I'm, I'm not su- maybe I misspoke, I'm not su-
Yeah, no, I was going to say, Steve, your thoughts similar to that?
Similar to, similar to.
Mike, similar to that, when we're going through line by line by line?
Yeah, yeah, I thought we put things on hold so we could prioritize like the intersection.
Deal with our priorities.
Yeah.
And Fred?
I'm more with what Mike and Peter said. I was wanting to create money so we could put it towards building some of those quadrant roads sooner. But then the other thing that I'm still saying, I don't want a one dimensional vision study, so I wanted to see some money put aside, whether it goes to Tulk, Tulk Tool, or somebody else to get some really nice stuff that justifies doing all the stuff to be to Beach Road so we attract the commerce and outside dining restaurants and all that. But I absolutely, when I did it, I was not thinking that we were doing this to, to spend that, that much money back in this, into old forty-one. However, I agree with Amy to this much, it is what it is, and it's costing what it is, and you can't twit about it now. And we are not the federal government, we can't twit money. But we do, we do need to, I think staff could go back and look at some things with that in mind, and probably help us get back to where we thought we were for a little better than that, I think.
Thanks, Pete?
Yeah, let me just be clear of what I'm saying.
Yeah.
I'm not implying we're going to find five million out of that for eleven, that'd be silly. It's like Amy suggested, you can't do this stuff, all right? But I do think that we need to find one. And, part of it is in here, and, and once again, I'm just suggesting, rather than all of us sitting here for five hours going through every one of these items, have staff go back, see if they can move some stuff out to two thousand and eighteen. Part of it is, I actually think I'd like staff to go back, as I mentioned before, we had a two point three million dollar increase in operating expenses from actual two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and sixteen. Now they've shown somewhat of the decline coming into the current budget. To go back and see, and this is not about personnel, we don't, there's no interest, we're fully staffed and we should be fully staffed. To go back in that budget and see if there's any other way to create some extra cash coming out of that, and be creative about it. So for example, one idea is, when we were talking about building fees, we have, if you saw that, there's an absolute match, right? The building fees that are coming in are more than paying for what CH two on Hill is actually giving us some free cash, but we can't use that free cash unless Audrey finds something, all right? But when you go to the other line item, that's in the operating expense for CH two on Hill, which is over a million and change, all right? You'll see that the fees there are nowhere covering that expense. It's something like two hundred and fifty-three thousand fees for their operation, which I forget what it is off the top of my head, but it's a million seven or a million eight, that's what it is, a million eight. So, maybe staff can go back creatively and see if there are ways we can raise funding there to take some pressure off of the expenditure thing. All right? So to me, those are two legs on the stool, and we can't, I don't think we can just say responsibly doing it here. And the third thing is what karma? I, I do think, you know, we have to be careful about, um, the ad valorem. Maybe that should come down a little bit, but I think at the same time, we should be looking, and I know how Mike feels, and made the point clearly, I totally understand that, but, um, I think we should be looking at some modest increase in some of these other fees that would give us substantial amount of money, to try to build a budget that meets the requirements that we have. And also puts us in a position where come next year, when you look at the budget at a glance, see, see, part of the implications of this is that you're drawing down those funds on that page, you know, the seventeen minus five, right? You're drawing those funds down, you have less funds coming out the other way. So we have a sustainable fund going forward. Anyhow, those are my ideas. I, it, it's, it's kind of a challenge to staff to go back and see what can be done.
So you're not saying that they should go through, uh, this uncommitted budget of capital improvements to find your extra three or four million?
Some of it.
Yeah, possibly, but we, we already did that, we already looked at all those things, and we, we had, I don't think there's anything in there that we said put on hold that's now back, that we vote, we voted to put some of it back, right?
Well, we didn't, we didn't think we had to do anymore because we thought we'd come up with five million dollars.
Okay, so you're, you're suggesting that they should look down this uncommitted budget of six nine and come up with something, plus get some efficiencies in the expenditure side in the operating budget?
Right.
Draw some money, and, um, because right now, if we do it exactly the way we, we have, we have two million two, if we, if we do none of these CIP budgets, we put it all into the quadrant, and then we use the one point nine, which is the things on hold, still have that too. The most we have here is four million dollars roughly, all right?
Yeah, and I, I don't think we can take every last nickel of that.
And it's not enough.
No.
No, and, and I think it needs to be said, and kind of going back to what Mike says, and I agree with the city manager, that to hold the line, I mean, yeah, I know it may, think, we're all residents here, but you know what? We did nothing for the years when the recession came. We've got to start rebuilding the infrastructure here, and that's going to cost some money. I mean, whether it's, whether it's leaving the, the millage where it is, or even raising it a tick, I know, I'm probably getting a million emails. But the point being is-
The key to win, actually.
Yes, Greg, the win, Greg got the win. City of the East. But the point being is, for the four years prior to the property values going up, we held the line.
Right.
We, I mean, we didn't go to roll back rate in one of Carl's, or the roll up rate rather, in this. And sometimes, I mean, we've got to start rebuilding and doing those things. Now, whether that's putting things on hold, and I'll get another million emails for this, I mean, if it takes six years instead of five years to do the quadrant study, and so be it. Beach Road and forty-one is not a, something that just flipped on last week. Ten years ago, Beach Road and forty-one was a nightmare, so it's not going away. Yes, we need to look at it, but also, we need to look at the infrastructure, whether it's parks and recs, whether it's, uh, public works. Those things need to be addressed, or otherwise, we can have the best intersection in the world, if everything else is going to hell in a handbasket. We, we, we've got to continue down that path.
Right.
And whether we get it through franchise fees, those things going up, or, I'll make the comment, whether we, with next year, if property values go flat, we may have to go up a, a tick to do what we need to get done. Yeah, there are some, I won't call them frivolous projects, but there may be some projects that can be put on hold.
Right. Let me make one last point I forgot to mention, which is, one of the reasons why we need some serious money, like five million bucks for the quadrant now, is, our next step is Lee County and X dot, and we want to expedite this, we need to show them that we have money in the game. Not money two years from now, not money five years from now. But I, I, yeah.
Correct.
Well, and, and I, and I do agree with you, and, and I'll, and I'll say the four letter word that probably all mics hear, is we, we did it with the old forty-one budget, we went out and got a loan. It made me think to get that loan. We still have the borrowing power of the city to do something like that, and I'll mention the other four letter words, is, is bonds and stuff like that.
Right.
If it's that big of a priority and we want it done now, we can do those types of things also, which I, I agree with. I, you see the way we, my other professional, we try to pay for things, we try not to borrow at all. But that, I mean, that's where we started.
But is that a fair challenge to, Carl, is that a fair challenge, assuming council agrees?
We will, sure, we'll do the best we can, absolutely. Yeah, Fred, go ahead, and then Mike.
Well, a couple, I, I agree with what Greg has said, I agree with what Peter has said. First of all, I'd like to know what, roughly, what percent of the taxpayers we have are what you call homestead. My reason for that, if you would give, if that's a significant percentage, which I believe it is, I fear what you would do, if you rolled this thing down, you would actually give them a, a, a rate of taxes way below what they're paying now. Because, as you said, what, what was that percentage, Carl, point seven percent?
Yeah, point seven.
Point seven, yeah.
Five point seven.
So if you, if you rolled back four percent, they would actually have a, a net fee of four percent lower than they already got. And I happen to be one of those myself, and I don't want it. Second of all, uh, old forty-one is what it is, it's costing what it's going to cost. And I, the other thing bothers me a little, more than a little bit, by saying we're going to do this, and we're going to cut this, and we're going to cut, we're actually kind of beating up on all the other facets of the city because that project is over budget. And, uh, so I don't think that's right. I do think that we shouldn't be frivolous with money, I do agree that we should explore all things, that's why I'm hoping that Audrey can be very innovative and come in to a way where we can borrow some money out of some of these protected funds. Because that's borrowed from herself, we can eventually pay it back. So I think there, there's a lot of good things here, so that, that's my, that's my adding my confusion to what everybody else is saying.
Very, thanks Fred, Mike?
Well, I guess to, to finding the five million, when we used the money to pay for the old forty-one project, we would have had to have paid for old forty-one this year, which was three million. So, where did that three million dollars go to that we would have spent out of sixteen seventeen?
Well, it was funded to come partly from, um, general fund and partly from gas taxes, so we just have to give back to those.
But, but we, we don't have an extra three million dollars laying around.
We would have, we would have had a budget that would have presented, um, revenues that did not cover expenditures and, and transfers out in the general fund, because, um, we would have to, to go into fund balance.
So we would have been cutting into reserves this year had we not used the three million?
In, in his fund balance, but not, not the designated five point one.
Fred?
Well, I, I, one thing I would say, and I'm not, I'm not being critical, because I think staff and everybody here, everybody on council has done a great job. I think when we were doing that exercise, we should have had some kind of a, either inform or what, that we're, whatever we find, we really are, we're going to probably have at least a couple million that we're going to need to put into old forty-one. I, I knew in the back of my mind that we were in some overreach, I didn't, I didn't know of the exact number, so. I think that would be good if we, whenever we do anything, the more information you have when you're trying to do something, the better job you can do, I mean, that's, and, um-
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm just saying, we, we prepaid three million dollars, so we should have an extra three million dollars this year somewhere.
I think what Ian said was, do it, so the gas tax and other-
Yeah, so, so that, that money is there.
It's, it's the million, because right now, the general fund, the budget is leaving a million dollars to build reserves. So, there's, there's a million.
Yeah, I, I think everything you're saying is fair, Mike.
Yeah.
I'm just proposing a process going forward, that Carl and the group go back and see from three possible legs on the stool, one is possible revenue, pardon me. The second is, um, trying to be creative in the expenditure lines, including finding perhaps other sources of revenue in there. It's a challenge, is what it is. And then, going through this and seeing what can be moved out to two thousand, not taken out, what can be moved out to two thousand and eighteen and swapped in for the quadrant, that's all.
Yep. Mr. Mayor, if I might?
Yes, please.
Okay, so, once again, I want to be clear that the downtown project is not over budget, all right? When you do a CIP project, um, you have amounts that are listed that may not be funded. So, we had a budget that, where we had numbers, we knew what the budget was, but we were not entirely funded. And so, by moving, we were either going to have to fund it by the council moving it to this year, like you did, or we were going to have to fund it in sixteen seventeen. Because the project is complete in September of seventeen, which is the end of the next fiscal year. So one way or the other, that, that three million dollars that got moved was going to have, was going to have to go to the downtown project, one way or the other, we're under contract, but we are not, we are not over budget, we are not over budget. So, um, we understand the challenge, if council is good with that, um, we will go off and, and do your, your bidding on that, so.
Yeah, Fred?
On the project, I for one would like to see Terry Street slid out with one exception. I, I think it would be great to get a multi-use path put in as soon as we can. You can use that other, the other funds to do that.
What's the other notion, Carl, we already talked about? Take some of the sidewalk stuff, fold it in to, I don't know what you have, uh, but, you know, fold it into multi-use.
Yeah.
And you may not be, you may not net be that much more money.
Yeah, um, and I don't know, Anne, I'm going to say something here, so, um, if I'm off base, please step in. But, um, I suggested early on today that if it would be easier for council to see the whole package of numbers we've got together, so you know what the total is, and what you have to apply to different things, we can do that, I think we can do that, as a, for example, I would go into my budget, I think it's the city manager's budget for consulting, and I'd go back to my original consulting dollar, all right? And I would take that difference, which was pretty much for tool, okay? And I would move that into CIP.
That's fair.
So that it's all gathered in one spot.
Yeah, that's fair.
And, so it's not spread out into little pockets in the, didn't do that on purpose, we just tried to, kind of made sense to put them in one place or another. We can gather those all into one space, if that makes sense.
It's not creating any more money, but I think it gives clarity and transparency.
Yeah.
I think that's great.
Yeah.
Could you do that with other line items, as in, I notice a couple of them have like advertising, like, I know Audrey has an advertising budget, I think Matt has an advertising budget, you have an advertising?
We, we really prefer not to do that. For CIP, we think it makes sense.
Okay.
Not, if you do that, then you are shifting some of the cost of the cost center, of Matt's cost center, into kind of a non-departmental thing.
That's fair.
And we try, even though we've got a number of what we call orphaned line items, they don't neatly fit into a department, we try to actually minimize those as much as we can.
There's also statutory requirements, like for example, in the planning and zoning budget, um, development services, advertising, that's regulated under Florida statute, certain advertising requirements that have to be done, display ads, that is different than-
I, 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 just as a transparency, I mean, without me going through every cost center, how much do we spend this year in advertising? How much do we spend this year in whatever, that's all I'm-
I think Greg is simply proposing a, a net, maybe an extra page that takes some of these orphans that are around on all kind of budgets, and just puts in a grand total for what the city's going to spend on that here.
Well, again, Fred, is that what they are? We're trying to, we're, we're trying to keep costs associated with certain functional areas, in those functional areas, so that if you say, gee, I wonder what Matt's cost center costs, you know, what, what, what it costs to run that department, you have it there. If you start moving those things away to a different place.
Not moving it, just, just summarizing it, like you'd have one sheet of paper and say, advertising, home states, whatever.
Well, we could do that, I, I guess we could do that.
Yeah, I think that's, helps with the transparency and makes it easier for us guys.
Now, say before you say it, call her in, just to make it more fun, we probably added in a few hundred thousand dollars today on top of it.
No, I, listen, I understand. I wasn't using my calculator, but this was one.
Are we, um-
I have a pro-
Oh, yes, Amy, please.
I still think that we need sort of like a total overview picture here, because, I mean, it's just what we've been through today. We added money to the budget, but let's put this in, let's put this in, especially for this CIP budget. But what we don't have is like projected, well, we do have in another central projected revenue, so, whereas it might not look so good right now, if you look at succeeding fiscal year's revenues, we, we can cover some of these expenses that we have.
In the future.
And, and I do think we have, we have to go through that process of prioritizing, and if we could sit here and say we want to do the quadrant, well, we, I- And if we could sit here and say, "We wanna do the quadrant," well, we, I agree that we can't just do it in one fiscal year. It's just not gonna happen.
I'm not suggesting that. I think the number is something like nineteen million. I'm just trying to get a start so we can expedite that project.
But we need some sequence in our minds of what it's gonna cost on an annual basis, you know, in at least the initial few years. And I do think that we need to look at debt financing for that kind of infrastructure. You can't do nineteen million dollars out of an operating budget for something that's gonna last for thirty years. It doesn't make any sense on the process.
I think that's fair, but I'd still like to challenge them to go back and do this.
You always want to say, "Save more money."
And see. Well, no, it's three legs of stool. I mean, part of it is raising more money. Part of it is moving stuff out. Part of it is being creative, hopefully, rather than cutting in terms of some of the expenditure that we directed.
And there is something to say, Mr. Mayor. There is something to say about going to our funding partners, because they're going to want to know what our effort is in bringing this to completion. These visions.
Right.
Already getting that.
It's hard to go to somebody and say, "I've got a hundred thousand dollars, so if you could come up with nine million, we'd be great." Okay?
Although we would do that deal.
Yes, Fred.
Well, Councilman Schlock is still fresh and has a little...
Well, he's still fresh, yeah, he's fresh.
Before he has to leave, would this be a good time to address the temporary, what do they call it, to trim? The maximum that the millage would be at?
Yeah, no, I think that's good. That was gonna be my thought next. But you have to take official action today. We're done with this part of the conversation, okay? That's great.
I'd make a motion that we leave it for now at what it is.
I'll second it.
And yeah, discussion fully realizing. We're gonna see some new numbers. We're gonna be approached by new things. We're gonna have a change of heart on something. We're gonna forget about something. We're gonna move forward and get to a final number. But for now, we would hold the mill rate the same.
Right.
For now.
And my comment is, we've got two months to know what that final number is that we wanna go with and do what I think Councilman O'Flynn said, a fine tuning or project or something.
So let me just ask this, and I'm in agreement that we should hold it steady for now. Based on the increased value of properties, if we were to leave, let's say, Final Passage, that's an increase of six hundred thousand dollars, is that what I heard earlier, or am I?
Yes, about that.
Okay, all right. Just for, for good to be ordered.
For now.
All right, there's been a motion and a second. Further discussion? Roll call.
Councilman DeWitt?
Aye.
Councilman Slata?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilman Mokaromba?
Aye.
Okay. Now, is it CIP time, or what time is it now?
I don't think so.
Yeah.
What do we need to yet cover?
Well, we didn't cover all the special revenue funds. They're, yeah, we got pretty quickly. The gas tax is actually the one that, and Matt already addressed that, has, I think, the explanations of the other special revenue. So on page ninety-three, the grant funds, there's grants that we, that we've been awarded and we're restricted as to how we use those funds. The road impact fees, basically, we, and those budgets came from the spreadsheet that came from community development that identified developments underway and accident unit and cost time by the fee. So they're straightforward, and that uses the funds, debt service on road debt. And then the park fees, we had certain projects that were budgeted or proposed to be budgeted with park impact fees and the building permit fund based on our expenditures there, basically, are the contracts. Page two, two M. So do you have any questions? They're detailed further on the individual pages.
Can John Dolma say something? He hasn't said anything today.
He's lost.
That's a joke.
This is a good time to ask.
The only question, and the only question I have is, probably goes back to Audrey more, so just as a, get you to call a freshman counseling, councilperson, can you give us or give me a list of, I know what impact fees can be spent on, as in like anything new, it can be further maintenance and so on and so. But could you give a, give us a broad list in email? Not do it right now, I'm not bad. What, like road impact fees? I mean, the way I look at it, there's ten million dollars in road impact fees in this. We've got the seven million dollars, seven point three million dollars in building permit fees. What can we spend these on?
Okay.
If you don't mind.
No, in fact, there's a memo written to the council for your workshop on July twentieth.
Okay. And it's on page ninety-three.
You just want for road impact?
For all of them, like, you know what I mean? Because regional park impact fees, like, other than today, I wouldn't have thought that we could, since we already have a skate park, just because we're moving it now. Are we gonna, on paper, on paper, are we gonna have two and this one's gonna go away? That's how we're getting around this? Putting a new impact fee? You know what I mean? Just so I know.
Sure, and I will, I'll provide a tutorial, but also remember that it's how you distinguish the facts, just like you mentioned the skateboard, as to whether or not impact fees can be used. For example, beneath a nature place, we needed a new roof on that facility, but we're changing it from a residential structure to a park facility, and at that point, I find, that's a new capital improvement. That's not operation, that's not a O and N cost. Because we're changing the whole facility, so I mean, there's so much fact patterns.
Just a brief overview. I don't need to get down on a measure like that.
Okay. And yes, I'll get you the definitions of each.
And don't forget the lawn and the building.
And, no, I have, that is a separate line. I'll get two different segments. And the one I'm working on right now is, we'll be talking, Anne did a great job of listing council priorities, and one was park impact fee monies for bicycle logging trails. So I have, I found that they do reference bikeways, and it depends again, how do you use them, which funds you can use. You can also use road impact fees, as well as when you can't use local option gas, you can use constitutional fuel tax, the two oh two forty-seven tax, which Anne is probably more familiar with than I am. We would do additional research if that's something. And then the attorney general is applying, you can use special assessments. And then you could also create more legally available revenue, so the free of Ad Valora, by either doing a special assessment, using communication services tax, or creating a business license receipt, and you could also increase franchise fees. We can make you money.
Mr. Dolma?
John, retire.
No, I can get you.
I was kidding.
He was kidding, he was kidding. Sorry.
I just said we haven't heard from him.
He was kidding, but come on up. What do you have to say?
No, whatever you want.
I'm just happy to be here.
How's the baby?
Doing very well. He picked her up.
Hey, draw some pictures of the baby up on the screen, Jerry?
I can do that. I've gotten several.
All right, buddy.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Fred, go ahead.
No, 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 I'd like to give another challenge, because I think what's gonna happen...
I heard that word. I'd like to match that challenge.
Well, you know what the challenge is, yeah. Never go into a challenge, you know what the loss back up is.
Right.
Okay, we're gonna come down to, at some point, we're gonna come up with a real tax rate. We may be including in that package a re-fine tuning of fees. I think it would be worthwhile, because there's obviously a difference of opinion on council. I know Mike is not favored doing any increases in fees. I think he would like to see the tax rolled back some. I think Amy is somewhat of the same mindset. I think we ought to have a parallel proposal from staff that says, "If you don't wanna do this, then here's what we need to borrow, and here's a way we can borrow." Some of it may be able to come out of that building fund, and some of it may be a loan, but that way we have, because I know it's gonna come down to...
And I would agree with Fred only on a little bit of it. That if we needed to borrow money, we would, but I don't wanna lower the millage to borrow from ourselves.
No, I don't, I don't either. I'd rather keep the challenge flat and see how short we are, and then we can go on to other borrowings.
Right. Yeah, I agree. And let's face it, we can't overspend and then say we wanna cut taxes.
Exactly.
Right, right.
We have to not overspend. It's the first step of the equation.
But that might mean that you can't do half of what you need to do.
Let them do the challenge.
Yep, but Fred offered a challenge, so there's the challenge. Okay, thanks Fred.
My challenge didn't get picked up?
Didn't get picked up. Not here.
There was no second on your challenge.
Died for no second.
Can I make one other suggestion, which is, I'd like to actually, since we're done, I think, I'd like to hear Nicole, I did, cut her off before, talk about that sprinkler pool.
Yeah.
If she's here, I don't know, Dolma's here, you know?
Dolma can fill in on the sprinkler pool.
You can pinch it.
Yeah, what we did in looking at what other options we could do, in lieu of having a skate park at the recreation center, as well as, you know, the pool project is an expensive one. But we were looking at other options that would be available for kids, especially something that would be free that you possibly wouldn't charge for, based on the public input from YMCA pilot program discussions, that we looked at other options. So this was something that I had been working on. This was also proposed last year. We looked at expanding Riverside into Lemon Tree, and a splash pad was proposed as one of those options. So what I did was I went back to our consultant and got some cost estimates for something like this. And these can be very expensive as well. I mean, two hundred thousand is for a two thousand square foot one. We do have a twenty thousand square foot space, but with the water and all of that thing, two thousand fit pretty well in that twenty thousand square foot space, leaving the water kinda going out everywhere. So on that lower two hundred thousand dollar end was something that we could do to put this at the recreation center. We could regulate it and have it be open when we're open, but we also could have it open all the time by taking down the fencing and not charging for it. There are operating costs to this, and that would all depend upon the size of one that you're using in terms of chemicals. Because you are having children use it, you do need to chlorinate it, so that is something to do. There is under these, where the pool actually is, is underground. So that's where the water circulates and sprays up. So you do have to test it for chemicals and things like that. Our staff can come over and do that. They maintain the fountain currently at the Lyles, so this is something they can maintain. But this would also not increase staff. So that was something we were looking at as well in terms of the construction costs and a lower operating cost in lieu of the pool facility being expanded at this time. So this was something that we had looked at as a separate option. I have been approached by others I know, Councilman Gibson, we talked about doing this before. Amy, you had mentioned it before too. So that's why this kinda came up as something that we would look at.
And Nicole, I'm sorry, would you say it's two thousand square feet? I'm trying to get a sense. That looks great, but how big is it?
That one in particular, it is at the middle range. It's about two hundred and fifty thousand to build that one, and...
Are we looking at it, or is it a lot bigger?
It is a lot bigger, because it's in a plaza. It's in a downtown area of Charleston, South Carolina. So it is in a downtown area, and it's surrounded by buildings. So it is in more like a courtyard type area. But that one is a little bit bigger than the two thousand square feet, but not by much.
Is there a spot in downtown that we could put that?
Yeah.
I just know I went to, over Fourth of July, I was in Celebration, and Celebration has something like that.
Well, that's what we were actually looking at, putting in.
That's right, when we were downtown sweating it out, that's right, you were up in Disney World. I forgot about that.
I saw those, and my grandchildren used them, was in Denver, and they have them in a lot of the individual parks. But they're tiny, they're not really big, they're like...
Yeah, the one in Celebration is as big as this right here.
You know, it's like twelve feet across, maybe more than that. But they have, you know, they just have small things. They're not nearly as big as that. But they have them in a lot of locations throughout the public parks, and the kids just love them.
I agree.
Yeah, I mean, the reason we chose this sort of size is because I was looking at it to fit into the spot at the rec center. But yes, you can make them in a variety of sizes in different locations.
You know, when we, oh, go ahead. You know, let's face it, when we're downtown, and we're having the concerts, and we're having all the stuff for the adults, and then we put the bounty houses and the stuff for the kids off to the side, what about in there?
That's something we can look at, that grassy area is used for events. But the one good thing about these is, we looked at this, and we were thinking about putting one on the lemon tree property, is you can cap them, so that you still could, you know, for Laura for events, she still could put things on top of it and not have it be in use for certain events if she needed to. So that is a possibility with these, is that you can make a cap for them, and she can still put over.
Just to touch on that, I think the lemon tree lot would probably be a lot better location than the grassy area, because the grassy area does kind of connect the event, and we have utilization of that space for the kids area. To separate that would be a difficult thing for our event organizers. But the lemon tree lot would be a wonderful addition.
Except that we're negotiating with the Lions.
Actually, Michael and Sister Godfather were before.
Another area that we could look at, if you're interested, is at the Lyles Hotel Plaza. That is something we were trying to put more attraction there, especially for the artist cottages, that this could be something that, I mean, we have a lot of brick paper space there. We also have open grassy areas, that this is also something we could look at putting there. And it would still be downtown.
What about communal hall property?
Yeah, I mean, if we have open space, anywhere there's open space, I mean, we can definitely...
In my mind, you know, this is, and I think we're all on the same page here, we're saying the same thing, just using different words, this is gonna be an anchor downtown. You know, it's gonna draw people downtown. Case closed.
Great idea.
You know? And I don't know, if, you know, you bounce it up there and somewhere cozy it up to the library, I don't know.
Well, the question is, do you want one big one, or one or two of them?
Right, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you can have smaller ones in different locations. One at the Lyles maybe, and then another across the street at communal hall.
But right by the skate parks. Well, whatever. By people. Yeah.
Or yes, you could.
Pick your skateboard right through.
But what I think was fun about it in the urban area is if you have it exposed to people who are doing other things, it's really kind of cool, but we embarrass you.
Yeah, it is.
Well, Carl, can we challenge you with this one?
And now here's, this is the challenge.
What's the challenge, exactly?
I don't know, whatever you wanna do with it.
Just add some more money to the budget?
We'll take it away from the quadrant.
Take it away from the quadrant plan? Amy just said that, not me, just so you know.
No, she wants to put it in the middle of the intersection.
Here's the challenge.
Oh, in the roundabout.
In the roundabout.
Roundabout at the quadrant.
No, roundabout by the school at the county's.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. No, I think we should do it at the quadrant. I mean, flyover to get to it.
Okay.
A roundabout flyover, how's that?
Remember, it's an intersection study.
It's an intersection study.
No, no, it's a water study.
It's a water study. So three hundred thousand, let's just, one last question, maybe, three hundred thousand would get you how many square feet? Three thousand square feet or how many?
Approximately, yeah, that's roughly what the costs are going at, about a hundred.
And let's face it, we can all kind of, you know, trying to assimilate to the size of a house. That's kind of small, right? I mean, that's kind of, I mean, wouldn't a three thousand square foot water park be small?
Yeah, but you're saying that's what they...
They are. They're small.
It's not really a water park. It's exactly what you see.
Yeah.
Well, you can add other things that are, not a slide, but like a thing that dumps water on. There are other things that you can do with slides.
Absolutely. You can make them, this one is in an urban area, so they wanted it to match the downtown. You can make them look like a water park. I mean, you could make mosaics on the ground. You can add features that spray things up or dump buckets of water on your head and put a small water playground in it. You can do those things. Instead of, most in downtown areas, so it typically looks like this, that matches the surroundings, but you can do a variety of things.
Like Steve says, the Florida version of a New York hydrant.
Yeah, fire hydrant.
I've got a wrench, we'll turn him on. Don't tell BSU.
Be a hookup fee.
I want a meter for you.
Let's get one donated.
We, Lakes Park currently has splash pads.
Who does?
Lakes Park.
Oh, Lakes Park.
Very popular in the summer. Lots of kids have it.
I guess, Carl, do we have anything else?
We did not actually go over the debt service funds.
I guess there is an agenda here, actually.
That's us.
It's like, look at that.
They are straightforward, they're starting to get more funds.
I'm sorry, what number?
One oh five. One oh five?
Somewhere the two debt service funds, then one oh seven, and one oh eight is the deal.
Amy, before you start, the first one, the two thousand eleven debt services, when's as soon as we pay it off?
We could prepay, or there's no prepayment penalty after October fifteenth, two thousand sixteen.
But when's it due, though?
Its normal maturity is November first, two thousand and twenty-two.
Now downtown is the one we cannot prepay for, and it's out till two thousand and twenty-nine, correct?
That's correct, and I have...
Three months, right? No, it's... Six months, it's a thousand dollars. What is the penalty?
Penalty is a calculation that's present value back based on the difference between the interest rate that we are paying the lender and it needs identified, it's not the debt bond rate, it's an identified rate, basically used by banks. So whatever the difference is between that rate and our rate, then it's present value back based on the amount of time that they won't receive that interest rate from us.
You refinance at a lower rate today than you did last year, interest rates have gone down, I mean...
That's what makes the penalty... That's what makes the penalty bigger.
And you can do it for less, for a longer time or whatever, you know, I see an opportunity there. The rates down a whole percentage, like in the last year.
Why don't we finish up and then we can...
Yeah, 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 for sure.
Could I get some clarification, just to move forward, that's okay. The one point nine million that's currently a hold.
On page seventeen, alright.
On page one seventeen. So we can definitely set full amount to the need to be true, come back with a proposal to the council.
My view is, it's up to you what you want to do. In other words, we're trying to find five million dollars for that, and it's up to staff to be creative. Part of it could be taking some part of the eleven million and moving it out to two thousand and eighteen. Some of it could be efficiencies or new revenue sources within the expenditure budget as appropriate. And some of it could be possibly thinking about other revenue sources like Carl mentioned at the beginning of the meeting. That's the package.
I got a question, I want to, Councilmember Flynn a little bit.
Yeah.
You keep saying five million, but on this thing that Ann gave, it says three point one seven.
What is that grade?
For the beach road quadrant plan.
No, I'm getting the five million from the work we did in a month.
Oh, okay, well, I guess the comment keeps going back to, so we can fund the quadrant plan, fund the quadrant plan. And again, that three point one, three point one is just an estimate, it could come in at five point one.
Well, no, the whole project, not sure that, no. What I'm saying is, the whole project is going to be obviously much more, you know, much more than that. Hopefully, we'll have funding partners for that.
Okay.
And one of the ways to open up that discussion on funding partners is what Carl said.
We gotta have something.
We gotta have something significant.
No, I understand that, I just... And I remember three something over here.
Five this year.
We gotta buck up upfront.
Right.
Yes, I do.
Yeah, council, I just want to make sure you're clear in understanding this, just from a legal standpoint, Florida constitution does not allow us to pledge adware revenue, so there is an issue at the city as to capacity. Remember, I made a joke about ten minutes ago or so, about we could always create new revenue streams? Well, those revenue streams can be used to pledge, so you're able to look at financing, but unless you have something to provide that capacity for borrowing, you cannot, I mean, you're limited in what your borrowing vehicles are. Does that make sense, council? Don't we go over that again?
I don't know, it doesn't make any sense.
Unless you get the voters to approve a referendum, you can't pledge for a specific project, you cannot pledge adware revenue.
I hadn't heard of the word.
No, what I was...
For funding.
For collateral.
Exactly, thank you.
For collateral, so we can borrow against...
Oh, no, we know that, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry. You're just telling me, make sure we know that.
Right.
Right, we hadn't suggested it, but, yeah.
I do have one more item that needs to be addressed by the council, and it needs to be addressed July twenty. The agreement with the YMCA that requires a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the city. That's not in our budget in the current year.
All that.
Well, hold on, it is, it can be considered into the CIP, CIP, the one point nine. We can pull it out of that one point nine.
I just wanted to be sure that that would be a key difference.
To reflect what we decided to do, yeah.
Right. Do we have to have action on that right now? And the only reason I'm saying is because we're, you know, we're gonna come back with some other numbers, right?
Well, the lease agreement is coming up for the ordinance of July twenty. So it has to come out at one point nine, or else we'll have to come out.
Has to come out of the budget.
Unless you have a hundred and fifty thousand in savings, and it's not there.
I think, I...
Yeah, pull it out of the budget, Anne, how's that?
Are you saying, Anne?
How's that?
Well, wait a minute, when is, when is the hundred and fifty thousand need to be paid? This fiscal year or next?
It's going to be this fiscal year.
This fiscal year.
Okay, so that's...
Because they want to move on that.
And I think that's just a subset of things that happened after you prepared this, otherwise it would have been in.
Right, yeah.
It's just like...
So if council's okay, we'll just figure out an answer and bring it to you, and it'll be okay.
Well, it's not actually in this budget, it's in the budget we're in now, not currently. Yeah, it's money we gotta find this year, not this year. Yeah, that's...
It's part of the challenge.
Not part of Fred's challenge.
I know Fred's challenge.
Not Fred's challenge, which is...
This is part B.
I'm sorry, Fred wants to borrow money, that's right.
Gotta change it.
Right, right.
Can't keep all these out of your... What's that, the CIP, the CPI, capital one point one?
Anne, are you good?
I am good, thank you very much.
You look like you need to answer about seventeen more questions. You're all glazed up, yeah, right? Is there any questions for Anne, or?
Oh, good, a big thank you, Anne.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So what's the next process?
Fred's the pain, you're not a pain.
Oh, yeah. Well, actually, Councilmember Corambe asked a great question, which is, what's our next step? Now, I know what the challenge is, okay, the question is, how do we bring it back to you and in what format? Because, and what decision making? Because the next, I believe, unless I'm wrong, Anne, the next scheduled meeting for the budget is the first public workshop or public hearing in September. And then you've got a second one in September, and you'll have to adopt the budget there to be ready for October first. So perhaps, I don't know, would you want to do another special meeting like this? Certainly not as long, to try to focus on the challenge areas?
I think we call it workshop.
I was just gonna say, yeah, can't we just continue to do four o'clock on the first Wednesday and eight o'clock on the second Wednesday? Will that get it done, or do we need a special extra devoted day? I'm just throwing that out there. Like, you know, like we've done these workshops early, ahead of our meetings, something like that, or?
Really, I mean, in terms of presenting a proposal to you, that's not gonna take any time at all. The question is, how you respond to it and the discussion you may have, in terms of deciding.
Yeah, you're gonna have time to think.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm in favor of those workshops, as we've been doing them ahead of the meetings, but that's what one person's opinion.
No, I think that's the best way.
Yeah, but the first one is already next week.
Yeah.
So the next one will be August, and then middle of August, and then...
I'm not here, I think I told Carl the first two weeks are August. I'm gonna miss the first one. So if we could do it on the seventeenth, unless that's too late.
Would you want to, well, Anne, you're gonna have to step in, probably on timing, but in terms to be ready for... Of course, we can take changes, even, even though it's not preferred, you can take it at the second public hearing, even in September, I mean...
Okay.
But, but, with the council, I'm not sure an hour would do it, and that's what you're...
Well, I was thinking, in my mind, I'm thinking we're gonna have three or four, but I guess we don't have time for three or four.
Well, we could have a meet one at the next meeting, we'll have some of it done by then. You're talking July twentieth?
The last meeting is next week, but that's...
I don't think we're gonna be ready.
No, that's a week.
Yeah. We've got some heavy lifting to do here.
Plus, she's gotta update with the hard numbers first, first and foremost.
Amy, are you there at the beginning of August?
No, I'm gone the fifth, for a week, you know, I'll be here in between, I'll be away in between meetings.
All in between meetings.
I'll be here on the third and the seventeenth.
I'll get a missed one.
Yes, some of us schedule our vacations in between meetings. We don't miss meetings.
You don't miss that.
I'm missing both September, so.
Oh, ooh. Fred, how about you?
Work related.
Taking the rest of the year off, or what?
Yeah, yeah, that's my point.
Well, what's wrong with the seventeenth of August?
Yeah.
It's just, it's just an early one. You start at eight o'clock and then you have a nine o'clock meeting, council meeting. I was gonna suggest, what about, how about the seventeenth of August after? What if we work to keep the agenda short? The regular council meeting, and then stay after to hopefully finish this up.
Are you gonna feed Fred, though?
Well, me too, I have to be fed.
Say that again, Carl.
So, on the seventeenth, you have a nine, you have a nine o'clock, or you have a nine o'clock meeting. On the seventeenth of August, you got a nine o'clock council meeting. You normally would have an eight o'clock workshop prior to that. I don't think an hour will be enough. What you may want to consider...
Yeah, let's do it after.
Is maybe not do the eight o'clock.
Yeah.
We do a nine o'clock council meeting, we purposely keep the agenda as light as we can, and then go into a meeting right after the council meeting.
That sounds great.
Does that make sense?
That would help me out for rotor. That would help me out for rotor.
Yeah, that's great.
What are the dates in September?
For a public hearing?
September seventh at Father One P M, and September twenty-second at Father One P M.
But there's not anything to say, we could have another quick meeting in August if we...
And September seventh, we'll have our meeting at five thirty, right, we'll have our five oh one and then five thirty on the seventh?
Correct.
And then what was the other date, Anne, I'm sorry?
It's a Thursday, September twenty-second at five oh one. And that's how you find other jurisdictions.
And those dates are a little off, because, just because we have to avoid public hearings being held by other entities.
Okay, that sounds good.
Carl, one quick point, I know Matt's got his bioreactor, and I'm sure that's gonna move forward, I imagine, but...
I would script out his, the rest of his budget, right?
Yeah, right, but the other thing about the stormwater master plan, obviously, we have the EPA, and we have a deadline, and we have the five-year requirement. But we do have this kind of inchoate potential out there with respect to the septic. And if somehow we can move forward that top line of the stormwater master plan, other than Matt's bioreactor, out to two thousand and eighteen...
Understood.
To give us time, you're talking about almost eight hundred thousand dollars right there, you know? And then the question is gonna be, does that put us, if the septic doesn't work out, does that put us too much under the gun as against the EPA requirement?
Right.
Just a thought.
Right.
One of the problems with moving stuff out is because some of the heavy lifting comes, you know, in this third and fourth and fifth year. So we're gonna have, we're gonna have a lot of pressure on the budget, beyond the first couple of years, so it's not, it doesn't help to move a lot of this stuff out unless we want to cancel the project. Yeah, unless we don't have to run it, maybe somebody else.
Are we good?
Yeah.
Okay, now we need to do public comment? Public comment at this time?
I'm the only public here.
Public comment.
I don't say something, right?
I'm in the debt of an equity here.
Your time's up, Rick.
Okay, here. I'm gonna make a lot of friends around the island. Believable Assuppriment Association is not for profit. They don't need thirteen thousand dollars from the city.
There you go.
Coming in hot, Rick, there, take it easy, coming in hot. You're coming in hot on the podium, take it easy.
Yeah, the Believable Assuppriment Association is a not-for-profit, and as all I heard, the city managers, they, that they're not giving any money to the not-for-profit organizations. Is that true? I can't get an answer, I started making statements. The question, this money, we're paying over three million dollars a year in interest and principal on money we've already spent, we've already borrowed. That's a too big a part of our budget. It's like, we want it now, we're gonna have to borrow money, you know, we'll pay it off, somebody else will pay it off. And we have money at two point two percent, I believe it's the number, and we got money at two point nine percent. Why can't we pay it off, and now the interest rates are down from when we borrowed at two point nine percent? Even with this penalty that we might have to pay, to pay off that loan, maybe we can get it for one point nine percent in ten years, or twenty years, and save money, and be less than we're struggling with this payment right now. We gotta be flexible. We had a lady in here talk about financing and stuff, and I don't think interest rates haven't gone up, they've come down considerably in the last year. Impact fees, I campaigned on it, do we need more people in the city beneath it? Do we want to be Miami or Fort Lauderdale, do we really need more people? Why would we need more people? We wanted a government, some people wanted a government that's run like a business. So we got a bunch of businessmen elected, so they work for the business people. Where are the people being represented? We got old forty-one, fifty million dollars spent on there so we could keep Benson's going. So we ran them out with all the improvements, Benson's is gone, you know, they sold out. Where are we representing the people? How are you all representing the people? I thought I elected people, I didn't think I was elected people that wanted to raise taxes. Here you came up with five million dollars you could have saved, but you can't come up with six hundred thousand dollars without taking it from the people. Now you want to raise my electric bill, my phone bill? Come on, people. I'm sorry, you know, I'm outnumbered, I can see nobody smiling, but I gotta do it.
We're just holding the mill for now, Rick.
Huh?
We're just holding the mill for now. We haven't settled on a mill rate yet.
We settled on a mill. What did you say?
I'll talk to you after, I'm sorry.
So it's a six hundred thousand dollar tax increase, plus whatever we're gonna get with this impact, with this electric and communications tax. Is this televised?
It is televised.
All right, well, come on, folks, send your emails in, thank you.
Thanks, Rick.
Thank you, council.